Tuesday, April 5th. It is 4:45 and this is our monthly committee of the whole. This is a meeting where board members are here to listen and to get information. We don't usually, we don't take votes at our committee of the whole meetings. We simply are here to have an incredible agenda tonight filled with really important topics where information will be shared with us so that we have the best available opportunities to know and to see what's going on in our district and to ask questions and to clarify and just come away with a better understanding. So tonight's committee of the whole meeting, I call to order now and I ask for our standing clerk, member Locklear Kemp, who's also our vice chair, to take role.
Hey, member Derek Eater?
Present.
Member Kirby?
Here.
I'm here. Member Charlofo?
Here.
Member Oswald is excused. Member Sedowski?
Present.
And member Sandholm is excused.
Did you do that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Superintendent Magus?
Here.
And Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Present.
So thank you. So that's just procedural item two and tonight our agenda is filled with presentations. We have the World's Best Workforce. We have the resolution of concurrence and non-concurrence. We have a presentation from the Equity Committee and the Equity Coordinator. We have a presentation from Project Aware. We have a presentation from ALC AEO and we also have a preschool presentation. We have redistricting updates and we also have an SRO presentation. So we have a full agenda and we welcome all of our presenters tonight and we're really appreciative of your time and we will hopefully move it right along. And I usually turn it over, I always turn it over, to Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
And I appreciate that, giving me everyone. And first of all, I want to say thank you to the team because I want to make sure I don't forget that and individuals may leave, you know, throughout the night. So I do want to say thank you to the teaching, learning and equity team. They've done a tremendous job all year long and even the prior year. And so I just want to say thank, thank you to them for all of their efforts and everything that they do to move teaching and learning forward for students. Today, we're going to just begin because it's very timely with regards to all the presentations that you, Charlofo, just mentioned. Coincidentally, they just come on the heels of our most recent graduation rate data being released because today is meant to really just share all of the good things, all of the ongoing initiatives and efforts that we are working on to improve outcomes for kids. So it's very timely that we are having these discussions. And I will jump right into the World's Best Workforce. As many of you know, and I know we have a couple of members, but in 2013, legislation was passed to ensure students had or received adequate, an adequate education, that they were college and career ready and to make sure that all of our students had opportunities to grow and improve and to close that achievement gap. That plan is called the World's Best Workforce. That's what it's known as. Just to let you know that the World's Best Workforce met, advisory team met last month to review the document. We also reviewed all of our ongoing efforts with all of our administrators throughout the district. In addition to that, we received feedback from the community and advisory members who were not able to attend an advisory meeting through a survey. So that survey went out in my newsletter and we received a host of information and feedback from those advisory members as well as other stakeholders in the district as well. Our website has been updated, so you will see on our district website the plan and the plan has also been provided to you in color here. So I'm going to quickly just flip through because you have this information already and the goal tonight is just to give you a real quick highlight of the things that we're working on and then turn it over to you for some questions. I have a team here because they are the individuals who are working with, you know, themselves as well as the people that they work with who make things happen. And there's a lot of ongoing efforts that they, that they're really working hard to put into place to improve outcomes. So I'm going to quickly leaf through this. On page two of the document, you'll see that it talks about the World's Best Workforce legislation and again, it focuses on five key areas. And most of you know them as kindergarten readiness, read well by third grade, achievement, graduation and college and career readiness. So those were the five key areas that the state mapped out that they wanted districts to develop a plan. Again, that plan is called the World's Best Workforce, but it includes a lot of other documents and planning that is also required such as the American Indian Education Plan. We have our, you know, Head Start Annual Plan. We have planning that's developed by each department with special education, achievement integration, you know, you name it. There's a number of plans that are underway and all that information is included within our World's Best Workforce Plan. They're included here and we're considering as we develop them. So as we quickly leaf through it, I'm going to jump to our strategies and goals here, which you will find on page eight. So we'll be page eight, that's where it begins. Page nine just talks about quickly the data, the number of individuals who participate, who participated in our state assessments. We have various assessments that we use in the district. We have FastBridge that's used in our earlier grades. We also have the MCAT, excuse me, MCA's and MTA's as well as getting. Under kindergarten readiness, page 10, you'll see that under kindergarten readiness, we have several strategies, systems and supports that have been identified. Many states you have been made aware of over the years. The data, as you see here, it does show that for the most part, the data has been consistent. Actually increased from 1920 to 21 to 22, excuse me, 20 to 21. So there is a slight increase in our students' performance on our fast data. So that's really encouraging because everything begins with how our students come to us and make sure those students are prepared and supported along the way as they matriculate through our school district. Read well by third grade. You will see the strategies identified there and the goals that are also identified and you'll see here that it's a third grade reading proficiency will be 90% for no student group below 85% and that's by 2025 as measured by our assessments. In here, you will see some data, again, that's provided, some highlights in that data. Overall, our student in area of reading, overall, over time, you'll see that there is a decrease in performance from the 18, 19 school year. As you all are aware, there's no testing given in 1920, but this year, our student performance is at 94% deficient. So there is a slight decrease there. Of note, you'll see that American Indian, American Indian and Alaska Native students, there's a slight decrease there as well as for Asian students, Hispanic and Latino students.
Assistant Superintendent Kandabon, do you want any of us to ask a question as we go through or would you rather we wait till the end?
Because I want to quickly go through these. Because I, I know that you had access to this already and you're eagerly waiting questions. So I just want to quickly point out some things and to field questions. And then as you see, one of the areas on page 13, a definite concern is our African American reading rate at 7% of our students' reading proficiency. So extremely concerning. Even, I'm one of those individuals who always point out that while we might be doing better with most of our white students, there was a decrease in proficiency for white students as well. So that's something that as a district, we always are watching as well because our goal is to make sure that all of our students are achieving at high levels and having growth annually. We want to see all of our kids reading at proficiency. Quickly to the next area is high achievement for all. That just focuses on how we really taking a hard look at our student groups, make sure that we are providing individual support for those students to shore up their skills over time. So data is, has been provided there. Graduation is on page 19. It lists like all areas, the system strategies and supports that we are implementing currently to improve outcomes for the graduation rates. Data has been provided for you there. And on page 24 is our area for college and career readiness and all of the support systems and strategies that we're implementing. And you'll see how we are performing on our, with our students according to the ACT, which as you can see here, it's pretty consistent. So that's something to be encouraged about in terms of our student performance on the ACT from 1920 to 2021. So again, the goal was just to make sure that you were provided an opportunity. This is our official present, community presentation regarding the World's Best Workforce, which is one of the requirements of the legislation. And so I'll open it up for questions. And again, I have the team here who oversees a lot of areas and planning and if there are questions that I cannot quickly answer, they're here to recall and answer.
I just, along with your opening comments, I want to say thank you to the teaching, learning and equity team as well as all of our principals and teachers who have put work into these, these efforts. I know that these are complex, you know, the reports that we're getting, there's, there's a lot of complexity to it and I think in many ways, it presents a really good snapshot of our current reality. And as we begin our strategic planning process, I think it's important to think about if this is our current reality, what is it that we're envisioning for our future and how we put steps in place to move towards that future, both through the World's Best Workforce but also through the strategic planning process. But I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to you, Assistant Superintendent Bonds, as well as the team. I know that Tanya and others were very instrumental in putting this together. So thank you for all the work that's been done.
Thank you. And I do want to add one thing. Could you just maybe remember one of my notes that I had here is I want you to recall that in the fall, roughly, I believe it was October, that the teaching, learning and equity team came to the school board and made a huge presentation regarding all of the planning that's happening within the departments. So at that point in time, that was our, in fact, a way of providing information to the community and the board regarding all of our efforts right away, even though it wasn't what we were calling the World's Best Workforce presentation.
One other point, I think we all realize that there's a lot of impact and unfinished learning as a result of pandemic and that the current status is not something that any of us are satisfied with, that we all are wanting to work together to move forward in those directions here and making changes that we'll be making in the coming months and years. Questions?
Member Mark.
Thank you for this and thank you for getting it to us ahead of time. And I really appreciated in October when we had those really in-depth presentations and I'm hoping that the public goes back to them because they really highlighted so many things. I appreciated page two here where you give the listing and the links to a lot of our other plans that follow underneath this and that that's easily available for people, right? On the website to just link into?
Yes, those are live links. That is great.
Yeah, okay, live links. So that's great. I was curious when you've talked about surveys and getting input from other people that, I know because of the World's Best Workforce, there's, community members are involved, but how broadly was that group of people? And then you mentioned that people could do surveys and things like that and I'm just kind of curious on that and that included staff as well?
Yes, it does. So the World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee, again, we met last month. It is, it was a diverse representation of the committee it is and I believe I may have shared that information with the board as well in terms of the membership, but it involves community members, also involves staff as well and as well as parents. And we even had students participate on the advisory. But because of the timing, because of the fact that we were moving away from virtual to in-person, not everyone was comfortable still with in-person as well as we learned something from the pandemic. There are individuals who value and appreciate the flexibility that the virtual provides. And so that's going to be something that moving forward, that we all will have to keep in mind that while they're really difficult to manage, having opportunities where it's in-person and virtual may increase community participation and even staff participation. So, so it was a diverse group. Because individuals were not able to attend and because we wanted to make sure that gathered additional information, I created the survey. A survey was created and that was shared in our newsletter that went to all of staff for them to provide additional information. I'm honest, that information is still being assessed. There was a, we did a quick analysis of what was shared, but right now it's still things that we are considering and will have to factor into how we move forward. What's going to be really important is how we use that data and what's going to provide some opportunities when we again engage in our strategic planning process because it gives us another piece of data around information that our community members and staff are saying in these five areas, here are some things that we should consider or here's what we believe could be done. And so we have that information, we're going to make sure that it is factored into future planning.
And if you could get that list, I don't, maybe I missed an email, but I'd appreciate that, appreciate being, including people for participating.
Absolutely. I will, we will reshare that. Other questions? Member Derek.
Hi. So there's a lot of interesting topics that are cross-pollinating each other on this council meeting today, so my mind has sort of been pinging, but when, when we know, we know right now that our graduation rates most likely for the next three years are probably going to struggle just because we're going to be sending kids through that have to run to the pandemic. So when we look at our four-year graduation rates, we know we're going to see a depression in the four-year graduation rates. How are we thinking about, this is probably going to be important in strategic planning, that we bolster those seven-year graduation rates? So like, sure, we dropped our levels at the four-year, but how are we going to make, fulfill our obligation to our students and families in this district by hoping we can get most of our students through in seven years?
So I think that that's, that's something that is still partially under development, but I think it's, it's important for us as we think about our opportunities for extended time too. There's quite a bit of, our SR funding is specific to extended time and the time opportunities through summer school, through things in the evening. I also think about the opening yesterday, the grand opening of the Delive Adult Education Center, that the work being done there is incredibly important when we think about support for, for students in transition, support for GED, that's one aspect. But I think when we think about our graduation rates, we're thinking as well about work being done by, by our ALC and AEL.
Yeah, that's really what I'm thinking.
How are we making sure that we are finding all of those opportunities? I think it's, and Dr. Lake, and I apologize for blocking Tanya earlier, but we're called Dave, get it, mostly in this room. But we were talking as well about how are we, how are we making sure that we have a good tracking system? What is our, what is our early warning system when students start to struggle? And then how are we making sure that we're providing scaffolded intervention as we move forward for, for those students so that they are able to make up as much as possible through support with the ALC, through supports within the school, through intervention? But I think for all of us, you know, those, those are, we have a variety of those safety nets, but we know that more students are falling through cracks than ever before. So how do we make sure that we are not just providing the safety nets that we've had in the past, but strengthening those, those safety nets, providing additional supports for those students and providing additional opportunities for flexibility and credit payment and for, for making up those, those lost credits.
And we made, did we make permanent dropping? Was it a half credit or?
We made it temporarily permanent.
So we, we, any kids that were ninth grade at the start of the pandemic, so ninth grade and on through, so we made it a temporary and it's a date when it expires. Okay, all right.
And I'd also want to remind board as well as the community that data just was shared or disseminated. So as a school district, we are still reacting to it. We are planning to engage in some deep conversations with our administrators and through a process with them, but then also know that our ongoing planning is one of the key strategies in here. We talk about the continuous improvement team. So the continuous improvement team process is where buildings, along with your leadership team, really take a deep dive into their school data and have great dialogue around what are some of the best strategies and high-level strategies that can be implemented? What are some of the systematic improvements that we need to, you know, work on and implement? And what are some of the other great ideas that we should be, we should be doing with our students? So those are some of the things that will be continued to be explored and discussed as we move forward.
I think it's also important to point out, and we have, that none of the challenges that we're facing with, with, with achievement should be ignored, but especially looking at some of the achievement drops for some of our students who are historically underserved, thinking about our various student groups that have dropped significantly in graduation rate. I think it's important for us and important for the board to recognize the equity work that we still, that is ongoing and that we still need to engage in. I think that throughout the, throughout the state, throughout the country, there's sometimes a move away from equity work, trying to thrust it into a place of controversy, but I think it's more important now than ever for us to be thoughtful and brave about how we do that work. And I appreciate that they've gone through an equity audit. I appreciate Thursday night, Nate Smith will be running the group over at Lincoln Park Middle School with some deep conversations on equity. And so, so I think that focusing on what is it that we're doing, not just as a full district, but what are some of the subcommittee work being done behind the scenes too is really critical.
I agree. And I look forward to as part of our strategic plan, really involving the current community partners we have and the many other community partners we don't have yet to help us with this work.
So the question I have too is, I know it's a state statute about all of these, all of these goals are connected to read well or do well or by 2025, right? Wasn't that year set before pandemic? So is there any talk at the legislative level of relaxing that 2025? Not that we want to let go of our goals and let go of moving and going forward, but is there going to be any, any discussion on that or is there already?
I believe there's some ongoing discussion, but I guess I'll ask Dr. Lake if she has heard anything regarding any plans to change. All I'm aware of is the state may be very clear that we are to move forward with assessing our students and thinking about how we can leverage the resources we have in addition to the ESTR dollars that we receive to shore up gaps and to make sure we provide some additional opportunities to close achievement gaps for those students.
I have heard through some conversation with various lawmakers that there is some consideration of going away from the World's Best Workforce Plan altogether. I have mixed views on that. I think it's important for districts to have really clear reporting structures and really clear strategic plans. And there are some aspects of the World's Best Workforce that can be somewhat bureaucratic and somewhat maybe hampering some of the flexibility that we would hope to. So I think it's a, it's a double-edged sword there. I think it's always important for us to have a really solid strategic plan with clear measures and I think that all, all districts should, should have that. But that is some of the conversation.
I don't mind, I don't mind the document and the data and the, and the information. And I look at the people sitting in this room that are involved in this at a lot of levels and I'm very confident that we've got the right goals in front of us. We've got, you know, we've got the data that tells us where, where we're in need of and we've got strategies and systems and supports and I know we've all worked on that and the language is clear and the direction is clear. My concern would be that the state mandates things and then that sets us up to either fail. Like what happens in 2025? That's a very unrealistic goal. And so, and then we're just back in that negativity, back in that perception within many communities, not just Deluth. We're not going to be the only ones with, you know, disparaging data reports. So, you know, just, just let's shoulder it together and know that data can give us great information. It can give us targeted things, but it's not a true reflection of what our students and our teachers and our staff and our leaders are doing. And in that, I also then know that it's a great deal of pressure on our, on our teachers. They're already feeling a lot of, you know, kind of scrutiny about what they're doing. And if their class, if Jill Lofold's English nine class didn't make the goal of whatever I was supposed to do by 2025, that, that would, that would cause me a great deal of stress and we might be seeing teachers leaving for that. But I, I believe in this document. I believe in the information we've got. I believe in this, in the leaders we've got sitting in this room that all have an aspect of this. I also know that Deluth's community, from opportunity rising to the chamber, to an incredible list of people that support our community. These, these statistics have to be lifted up by more than just our staff.
Absolutely.
And, and until we solve some of our socioeconomic issues, before we solve some of our mental health concerns, before we solve, you know, addictions and negativity and families that are struggling, you know, these, these data can, is not just a reflection of what the teachers or the staff or the leaders are doing or not doing. But I like the document. I like the gathering. It gives you clear focus, but I do, I do want you all to have a lot of grace and compassion as we work with each other about our expectations for what our students, we want to have great expectations for our students and our teachers, but we also have to be, have to lock that balance, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
True. Those are great comments. And what we talk about a lot is the creation of SMART goals within the sites. So even though the state may have these lofty goals and, I'm one of these people that I believe over time, we can actually achieve those goals that have been identified. But I'm also pragmatic in thinking that at the sites, we have to at least create what's known as SMART goals, right? So things that are achievable and realistic, but, but does provide some stretching opportunities for, especially for the underserved students who are constantly marginalized or are not getting their needs met as, you know, denoted by the data. Because we still have to continue to try and strive for increasing those outcomes for those kids. So at the sites, we try to be as realistic as possible and, and I applaud, you know, the sites.
I have a question for Dr. Lake, actually. It's on the data collection. I noticed that the percentage of participation is down significantly. And in the past, I know that sometimes non-participation meant failure in tests. Is that the case in some of these? And secondly, does that non-participation vary by the student group? Because that affects the data too.
Yeah. The drop in participation that we saw was really pandemic related and we did have flexibility coming from MDE during last year to account for that. So we had lots of, lots of families that opted out. We had lots of students that were in disenframing that would have had to come in person for testing, though we did offer those opportunities. Many families weren't comfortable with sending their students in. They were temporarily through this flexibility excused. So the participation rate didn't impact our scores in the sense that students were considered non-proficient if they didn't participate. It did skew our scores because it was really a much smaller group of students that took the assessments. And then the second part of your question about student groups? Yeah, we reported out on the MCA data in the fall. We took a look at the participation rates across our schools, across our grade levels and then across our student groups. And some student groups, you know, were impacted more with fewer students participating. Also, we noticed less participation in our older grades. And then our schools with highest poverty also, we had lower participation rates.
Other questions?
I would be curious to kind of dive into some microdata about like specific programs that we have in our schools that kind that we have in our schools that kind of address some of these issues already and just kind of see what those percentages of graduation rates, like the check and connect or dash. I'm wondering if we have, have that data and if we don't, I'm sure we do somewhere. It'd be nice to, to see that and kind of do.
And we do have that data available. That's something that, I'm pointing to Dr. Lake because I know something that she's really proud of and is a champion for. And we're really excited this year to be able to expand our check and connect programming to all four sites. And so I know, Dr. Lake, if you want to share the data.
Yeah, anytime I have a chance to talk about checking connect, I'm really excited. Yeah, so we, you know, as you know, we started the program with two mentors at Denfield High School. That was in 2015. Jason Crane was a big part of that, bringing that into the district. Our students who participated in check and connect, we did a comparison between that group of students who were considered our students highest at risk of not graduating. Our data suggested that, students who are on I P's, also students who were either African American or they're Canadian and on the I P's. That group of students, that higher risk group has, has a higher graduation rate than, than Denfield High School as a whole. Also, all of our students who have participated in that program have now graduated, all of them within the four years, with the exception of one or two that then graduated in the summer of their, of the summer of their fourth year, so a little over four years. So we have excellent data about that. We're able to write a grant with St. Louis County as a part of the pandemic engagement. Got a really generous grant with that. We now have expanded 14 mentors across all of our secondary sites, so it's not just at Denfield High School. We now are fully staffed with our 14 mentors. We have hundreds of kids that are getting those supports. And we're very hopeful that, you know, if we're able to follow the programming to fidelity as it was intended and designed, that we will see those same results in that expanded group of students. We're also in the process, we have a grant committee tomorrow that will be reviewing an extension to that grant to expand our data collection capabilities that if we get that grant, we'll also be able to use it across all of our secondary schools as an early warning system, where we can be looking, you know, at real time data, all of the data sets together, where we can really identify our students who are at greatest risk of not graduating earlier on, so we can intervene either through the check and connect program or match them to interventions that are most closely matched with their needs.
Thank you so much. And data like that is going to be really helpful on the strategic plan.
Yeah, definitely. There we go.
Number lock.
Yeah, I, I was going to say, I, I'm on page 10 where it's the kindergarten readiness. And, you know, I know that's something I've just been really proud of is the work that we've done and the investments we've made in early childhood programming and collaboration. And I would like a presentation on that with, just to, to, to kind of further dive, as Agar said, and, and make sure the community understands the many avenues we've kind of taken in that area. So thank you for this page, but I know there's so much more in there.
Would you like to share anything? Especially like Mosheken Weyman.
Mosheken Weyman's been really great.
Which is?
Mosheken Weyman, our OJW language preschool. And we've got a great year data. We are seeing exceptional results. So across the board, it's preschool does well with all subgroups. So we are working with Dr. Lake to look at the measure that's human rights recognition as the world's best workforce plan. So we're going to, in fact, maybe this week to discuss further what Agar Lake can share as the measure of the world's best workforce.
Again, I just want to thank those of you sitting here and all this aspect, because you look at the data that's in this, in this collection, you can get kind of discouraged. But then when you listen to the, the talent that we've got sitting in the room and know that we are working hard and, you know, it all doesn't show up in data, but we'll just keep plugging ahead with that positiveness that Nita always brings to the table and all of you, very much the knowledge and the data ability that Dr. Lake can, can share with us is incredible. So good stuff.
Appreciate that.
And a bleak, you know, and it's sometimes a bleak word, but.
Yeah, it can be. And like I've shared earlier, and I know we, we take it very seriously. We take the data very seriously and we know while we're doing well in some areas and we have some excellence throughout our district and we have many things to be proud of. We also know we have a lot of great and significant challenges that we have to continue to tackle. And so that's why, you know, we do continue to bring, I think someone asked about bringing presentations. That's why during a call meeting, I try my best to make sure that we are bringing the programming that's being implemented throughout the, throughout the district. And so we will continue to do so. As a matter of fact, we're going to hear a little bit more tonight about some of the things that we're doing to improve outcomes for all of our students. But we have a long way to go for some of our students. I know they just take it serious, but we just have to figure out what we can do. Thank you. So let's go for our. That's my computer. I'm excited because my computer went down.
So we're going to go on to concurrents and nonconcurrents, three B, one B on our agenda. Welcome, Anisa Blake. Nice to see you. Thanks for coming.
Good to see you all. First of all, I want to apologize. I was on the agenda last month. I came down with a cold and was unable to make it. Due to our rescheduling, I was unable to get a commitment from a parent committee member that is always usually by my side, helping me present the information. But I did ask them for their full permission to speak on behalf and answer questions for them, and they said, you'll do a great job. So I appreciate their confidence in me. So I thank you for your time. I feel like timing is right. Maybe being sick last month gives me an opportunity to come right after the world's best workforce presentation, because I feel like it coincides really well. So as you all know, some of you may be new to this, every year, the American Indian Education Department and American Indian Parent Advisory Committee is required by state to fill out a compliance documentation, documentation called the resolution of concurrents and nonconcurrents. And so what it is, it's a, it's, we look at the goals of the world's best workforce and we look at the data and we figure out what is a school district, where is a school district lacking in serving our American Indian students beyond what the American Indian Education Department is doing? So it was nice for Anthony to go over the world's best workforce before we jump into the resolution. I just want to say that I've been in this school district in this position about 11 years, and I want to share with you all, this, this document that you all have and received is a two page document. When I came here, it was a 14 page document. There were so many things and so many goals and objectives that I thought, how can anyone focus in on any particular goal and really make a difference? So, and it wasn't aligned to any of the, back then, we didn't have the world's best workforce kind of guidance. And so over the years, with a lot of work with, when Bill Brownsepp was here, when Eddie Profford was here, we really like figured out, how do we make this a smaller document for us to be able to begin reaching some of these goals and objectives for our American Indian students? So I feel like over the years, it's been, after spending a lot of time redoing our, the way that we function as a parent committee and really educating them on what are their concerns that we have as a school district? What is the data? What does it mean? How are we being, how are we being successful? And so being able to train them and educate them more on our system has really been helpful for them to focus in and get it down to a good two page document. And for us, that, that was a huge, a huge win for us, because we want to make sure that as we're working side by side with different departments for the Indigenous Public Schools, we want to make sure that we have really solid goals that we can focus on and work on together that are easily attained and totally doable. So with, with that, you know, it is aligned with the world's best workforce. And I, I just want to share with you all that I've been in this position for 11 years and I look at the data year after year and it's, some years we go, we jump up like 20%. Other years, we're down like 40%. It's a consistent, you know, I would say a roller coaster. But I genuinely, I genuinely believe throughout the years, being able to build relationships with the wonderful team that I have sitting behind me and the people that I work with, we're able to have the hard conversations about what is it that we're not doing to serve American Indian students? What, what are some things that, you know, what is some training? What are some resources? What are, you know, looking at our education system from a different perspective? You know, so we can open our doors where, where my community, our American Indian students and family feel safe and welcome here. And so over the years, I feel like we've made a lot of steps in the right direction, but I honestly do not feel like we are where we need to be yet. We are still, we are still failing our American Indian students in the public schools. And I, I say that because I look at the data, but when I work with my staff in the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, we do look at the data, we review it, but we, we think past it, because we know from our own experiences, a lot of our students have test anxiety, you know, the time test, the, just any of the anxiety with any testing. And so for me, I feel like the data with the testing is just a small piece of measuring the success of our American Indian students. But we do live and work in a system that is very data driven. So I ask my parent committee and I teach them about the data collection and I say, you know what? Let's put all that aside. What do we need to do for our students? How do we need to develop in relationships with them? And with their, you know, the people that we work with, within the schools? And how do we move forward with that? How do we keep them engaged? And so with that, I feel like we are making the steps in the right direction, but I feel, I also feel like there's still a lot of work to do. And so the resolution of concurrents and nonconcurrents that I'm giving to you all and presenting to you all, we're filing nonconcurrents, meaning that we're not where we are at in regards to providing an equitable education for American Indian students for them to be successful. There's a lot of work to do. In here, you can see there's the aims, the goals, the reason why we're filing nonconcurrents. And there's also a really nice column of progress. And in, in every single aim and goal, there are, it's, there's progress. We're, we're moving forward. We're doing, we're doing what we need to do, but not everything we need to do. And then, you know, we came up with some recommendations. You all know, most of you know, in the past, there will be an opportunity for you all to have a response as a school board. You have 60 days to respond. I have the document right here. We had a couple of signatures from the chair and from the superintendent saying that this presentation actually happened. That's our way of being monitored that we are doing this documentation and presentation to you all. So I, that's all I have, if any of you have any questions. I do know that there was an email question about missing data. When this was created, we didn't have the graduation data in front of us, so I left it blank. And once they, once my committee approves this, I can't go back and make changes unless I get their approval. And we actually don't have a meeting scheduled for this month, so I, I didn't want to do that. So it was just the, the data wasn't available then. You're welcome.
I have a quick question. I went back and looked at the last couple concurrents. And I, what I really sort of stood out to me was the changes in kindergarten readiness. I think the work that you've done there is really going to show fruition as we move through this process. I'm, I'm really, really happy to see that. So I think when students feel seen, loved, heard, can be their full authentic selves, especially at that young age, I think it, I think it's really important. So I want to thank you for that work. And there was also some change in language that I, that I appreciated in the recommendations for like read well by third, closing the achievement gap. I like the language that was used that addresses cultural inadequacies in the intervention model. I like how the weight of addressing those cultural inadequacies is on us in the district. So I think I, I like some of the language changes and I, I saw how this evolved and refined over the years. So I just want to give you my appreciation and thank you for the work that you do and especially for Indigenous students. So thank you.
I appreciate that and I want to give recognition to Sheri because she's been really good and working side by side and figuring out what can we do at that young age for our Indigenous students in public schools.
If they can come in and have a fantastic experience like that and carry some of that joy with them as they go through, I think that is really life changing. So I appreciate that. And your shoes are fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number lock.
Thank you for highlighting that, number eater, the, the early childhood areas. I had a couple of questions. One is, where you referenced the anti bias training was done district wide. You highlighted that in a couple of places. And can you just refresh our memory on when that was done? And you, you put it as progress, so thank you.
Yeah, as I was gathering data for this document, I was, I was reminded that the district had an anti bias training. And I believe. Yes, please. I'm like sitting here like who was?
Castrol, staff development.
Right.
So we had done anti bias training virtually last year, but we also had, had, so there were some training modules that were sent out, but then staff also had time to have further discussions with groups of people. And that was more of our whole staff. Prior to that, we've done some work with principals on anti bias training. Ron Lake had done, Ron Lake had really, gets credit, along with Jake Laurent and others, and now Akway, I think, for really getting things going in this district a few years back. So it's, it's been a process over time. And our latest time that we did things was, would have been the second staff development day last year.
Great. Well, we keep that happening and thank you. And I definitely know it's been a process over time. And then I just had another question about the middle school and high school OJW language program. And I, I guess, is there anything that you'd want to add on what we've done to expand that or reach students with the middle school and high school language program?
My understanding is, I mean, let me refresh my memory on this.
It was on progress and it was the last section on kind of other items. And, you know, I know we're offering it, I just want to kind of from your experience or our, our parent advisory experience, if they felt that's meeting some of the needs.
Yeah, definitely. It's meeting the needs of our American Indian students at that level that want to continue. And, you know, as we. And, you know, as we move forward, we have a, a team of us that is like the immersion team. And we're trying to engage as students are coming out of Masabe Conlogi immersion, what opportunities will they have in middle school and high school? But it is my understanding that I think after next year, we won't, we can't offer a language at the middle school due to an arts credit is my, is what I've heard. And so, you know, we're trying to, as a parent committee, trying to be creative, like as our students are coming out of Masabe Conlogi immersion program, what opportunities will they have in middle school? We know that they'll have opportunities in high school as long as we keep promoting and moving the high school program forward.
And as a follow-up to that, we had, you know, I know we've had a lot of conversations with board related to our secondary scheduling as well as the art standards that need to be in place. We are hoping, in fact, we just talked about it extensively at cabinet today, that we were hoping to some, find some time at the board, either during a regular board meeting or perhaps a work session to appraise the board of what our choices are related to moving forward with, with some of those potential schedule changes because there's, there, there's kind of easier, quicker fixes that can be put in place that you need to consider as far as meeting our state statute with those standards. But then also what would be a second phase potentially of looking at, how can we change the structure over time? Know it's really important to include you as board members and also to include the the teachers through the, through the bargaining and legal management processes as well. So we will be communicating with you more than, not today, or not today. But very near future, we'd just discuss that.
Can I ask how many American Indian, are they called integration specialists that we have? In our, is it just one per building?
Within my department, we have American Indian homeschool liaisons. That's different than an integration specialist. Integration specialists are under the Office of Education Equity.
But over the years, when I was at, working at Denfeld, we've, we've always had an American Indian advocate.
American Indian homeschool liaison.
And they work in the building?
Yep.
Oh, okay. When you say homeschool, it's kind of like.
It is. It's the, the term that we got from MDE.
Okay. And that's through your department?
Yep.
Homeschool liaison. And how many do we have? One per building? So we have 13 or is it just middle school, high school?
We have one, two, see, I have one on maternity leave, so sometimes I'm like, where is? We have five. And they are to serve all, all American Indian students into the public schools. Three of the five funding comes through special services. And then the other two I generate through our either state funding or our federal funding. And those are, how they're set up throughout the district is they're in sites that, that have a high population of American Indian students. And then they also have sites as needed, depending on the needs at, let's say, Condon or Lester Park or Lakewood. But they are K through 12.
And do most districts have those, those staff support? Like other districts, do they have the?
They do.
I see a lot of nonsense happening.
Yep, they do.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
Next we have Nate Smith. He is our Education Equity Coordinator. He's going to give an update related to the EAC bylaws.
What up, school board members? It's nice to be here again. This is more of an informational share about the EAC bylaws that we continue to have community conversations and EAC is growing. Just a couple amendments to keep you in the loop of some changes to the bylaws. If you remember back in January, I think it was, maybe February. Well, January, school board meetings, we adopted a new set of bylaws, but a bunch of different things. So we have a couple amendments here. I believe it's included within the board book notes. One of them is creating a new section, section 3.2 to the article three of the bylaws. And the amendment reads as follows, the EAC shall remain committed to building consensus around the pursuit of education equity opportunities and will refer to the commitment for equity framework as stated in the school board resolution. E six one eight three five five that will guide and support EAC participation. And that school board resolution is also attached in the board book. And that will be included as an exhibit at the end of the bylaws with the goal and the meaning, the meaning to include this bylaw within this section to try to ensure that EAC participation stays focused through like an equity lens and the conversations are equity-minded. And so if conversations get derailed in any way, it's a language and structures like this within the bylaws that allow us to reframe that focus and to, to make sure that we are, as an advisory group, committed to equity conversations using frameworks like this that the school board passed back in, I think it was 2018. So that's just one. And then the other amendment, number B, is at the very end of the bylaws that were passed in January talks about, I guess, just providing data to EAC as it's requested. And so this just allows for more specificity at the Office of Education Equity. I guess that would be myself in the office being responsible for providing that data. So instead of saying the school district, ISD 709 is responsible for providing data, it's ISD 709 and the Office of Education Equity. So let's just say it's an accountability piece to, as data gets requested, who provides that? That makes sense.
So what brought about, you know, the amendments, you know, was it through dialogue with, with your EAC community people or, you know, I know we're transitioning and so you came up with bylaws in January. I just wonder what, what, what made you rethink that you needed these two?
So.
I mean, not that I think, I think you need these two, but.
Yes. Wonderful question. So in January, the bylaws were passed. And February, we went through the bylaws line by line with all the members and participants who were there, probably 25 people or so. And we had just group conversations about the bylaws and what they said and how they aligned with our, our goals as an advisory group. And then with the new bylaws in place in February, any adjustments or amendments to the bylaws have to be put on as an agenda item for the next meeting. So this was talked about as a bylaw adjustment in February. And we had the conversation in March amongst the participants who were there. We had a quorum, we probably have around 25 people again, and built consensus. So unanimous consent to push forward the bylaws as it was outlined here. So it's a lot of dialogue and participation and consensus building. Yep.
Good job, yeah. I, I so appreciate all the work and the way you've been bringing people together, Nate. I have a question about this resolution in the, the T form, the, the T form that we refer to. I think member Kirby and I might have been the only two board members that were on the board when.
No, I did too.
Were you here too? Okay, so three of us. In your conversations with some of the new people that you've brought in, is that T form adequate? Is it helpful? Is it a guidance? Is it just a piece of, piece of paper?
I think it's adequate and helpful to the extent that it's utilized and that it's used. And I think as we revitalize EAC and bringing back conversations and focus points like the T tool. And we got tremendous support from district administration to, to reinstate some of that within district processes and policies and evaluating decisions and stuff as they get made. And then so our office is trying to align the T tool and bring in every time that it's been used and have it in a shared Google Doc. And part of the conversations that we've had with the community is, I mean, there's just, there's trust that has been fractured between, you know, community and diverse community, especially in our, our district, our system, institution, which isn't unique to our school district, but as a meaningful and impactful and just practical way that we can rebuild some of that community trust and engage the community and trust building. It's, it's using things like, like the T tool. So, but it is imperfect, absolutely. Like, like anything, so opportunities present themselves as they do to, to make adjustments. I think we'll explore those as they come, for sure.
Look forward to hearing more of your thoughts on it.
Other questions?
Will this then be on our agenda, on our school board agenda to vote on the bylaw?
Yes.
I was just going to say, having been at the EAC meetings, I just really appreciate the work that you've done, kind of building that community collaboration and the conversations. I was just really pleased that they, people within the group brought it up as an issue, like wasn't the link, the link wasn't working and we got it working to the T tool. Is that correct? So things like that, it's a great, that just shows the collaboration that's happening between EAC district and the community as well. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you all too, just as happiness.
Thanks, thanks. Thank you.
Our next, how about we do the next presentation, then maybe a five-minute break? So let's.
Sure. Yeah, that's great. You run a good meeting here. I never give them a break, so you know, take advantage of that.
So let's start with our next, we have Project Aware presentation and we have Kelly Brent and Jacob Lauren.
Glad we made the cutoff.
You're like, come on, yeah.
So first of all, I'd like to start off, if I could get a shoe compliment too, like an easy pay.
You have to have shoes that deserve the compliment.
I'm glad it went, yeah, went for, right. Sandwich in between two nates. Thanks for having us here. I will say just the feel of this compared to Hox is so different. It's less like intimidating and cavernous and this feels like a warm cozy sleepover. I appreciate that. We want to go through some of what we talked about at the beginning of the school year, which was our multi-tiered systems of support. And really, we're, we're putting a lot of our energies in that social, emotional, behavioral side as well as the grant we received, a five-year grant called the Aware Grant that Kelly is overseeing. I'm Jake Laurent. I'm the Climate Coordinator for Duluth Schools.
And I'm Kelly Brent, the Mental Health and Social Emotional Behavioral, all-dia tiered systems of support coordinator.
And so we're going to kind of dual-fold this and be able to give you some updates of where we are with some of that either spending of funds, training of staff and/or implementation. So kind of a lot of information to go through and again, feel free to ask us questions as we go along. I'd like to start with Second Step. Second Step is a social, emotional learning curriculum. This is our first year implementing it. We are implementing it pre-K through eighth grade. There is no high school Second Step curriculum. And so first year after pandemic and really another ask for our teachers. And I just want to be really mindful of that and also say a huge thank you to our teaching staff who have put this as a priority. I also really want to thank, just backlogging, each school has what we call a site champion. And that is a stipend position. It's teachers, social workers, counselors, all different, dependent on sites. And we're really relying on them heavily to help out their school sites. Give them more of that kind of homegrown feel and support. And we wouldn't be anywhere we are without their help. I think the really cool part of that team too, one of my favorite teams to work with is just their willingness to dig in and start working on what we can do to make this better systemically. So really just great group that, that's gone above and beyond for us. So as I said, it's our, our first year implementation year. We did have PD this fall in regards to it. And our site champion team set a goal of 80% for this year. 80% means that staff have opened the lesson and have completed the lesson. We're able to digitally track that. And so that's really nice. And we're going to do three data polls this year. We did one in November, one in February, and then we'll do one to end the, the year. And so really what we are at right now with our elementary, so if you kind of round it all out, we're at about 74%. So we're just below that goal. I think I still am very optimistic that we can hit that because elementary is 20 lessons. We have like 38, 40 weeks of school. And so hoping we can finish really strong and hit that mark. Also understanding that teachers are asked a lot of this year. And so trying to find that balance between this is best practice for kids, but also being empathetic with the workload that teachers are under. Our middle schools, so our Dean and Lincoln Park, they have that embedded in their WIN schedule. And they are showing right now 98.5%. And I just think of the logistics of that alone, pretty impressive, impressive data. So really impressed with them and, and all our sites for, for doing this. We do have the, that curriculum bought for five years. So this is our first year. We'll have four more years. And then really able to look at, is this what we want going forward? And just, I think the last note, it is a digital program, which also helps in a lot of different facets. Whether you like trees, whether we ever have to switch learning models again, a really kind of 21st century curriculum. I want to switch over to PBIS. PBIS is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. Currently, we have Denfeld, Lincoln Park, Lor Mac, Piedmont, Lakewood, and our pre-K that are engaged in the PBIS process. And I think one really cool thing of this Aware Grant is being able to compensate people for their above and beyond work. I was at Piedmont for many years, loved PBIS, was a coach. We did that all pro bono and those were after hours, a ton of work, setting our entire school culture and climate. And so by having this Aware Grant, I will say that having that kind of autonomy, but also that ability to thank people financially for that above and beyond work is one of, I think, the biggest lights of, of it. And so for these PBIS sites, we've given stipends to all members and then a little bump for coaches, the ones who are kind of leading that programming. And then another part that is always a hassle is how do we raise funds? Because this stuff isn't free. If we're having events, we're having people come in. And so also giving each site a chunk of, of funds that they're able to use in their PBIS programming kind of eliminates the having to go store to store and ask for money, which is really what it is, asking community members to give more. And so really happy to, to be able to support those efforts at those sites.
Will you elaborate a little bit on, on why? I, I know why because I was at Denfeld during PBIS, but so the, the chunk of money that you are able to give to our sites that have PBIS are, are really because of maybe of the reward systems that we have for our students? And so the need for going stores to get gift cards or is that what you mean by this chunk of money being able to be used instead of asking our, our, our businesses in our, in our neighborhood for that money?
Yeah, it could be positive reinforcement. It could go towards universal expectations. It could go towards posters, for example, being able to have enough posters throughout the building to talk about locations and expectations that align with that work. And so there's a lot of different things that schools are kind of choosing to use the funds for, just depending on what the need is. And PBIS, I think there's this myth out there that exists that it's primarily tier one, and so primarily focusing on like all of our students and what we're doing as a whole school community, but it also could be utilized for tier two or tier three support. So, if we're looking at additional layers of intervention, such as a curriculum or something like that, schools would have the ability to purchase something like that as well.
Could you just, over the schools that are PBIS schools again?
Sure. Twice as fast this time?
Yeah.
Denfeld, Lincoln Park, Laura Mack, Piedmont, Lowell, Lakewood, and pre-K. I think the only thing I'd add for the funds, too, is even that, like, that stuff that makes kids want to come to school, like a cool assembly, having kind of community providers come in and put on a show sometimes is really, really great, you know, as a class fund, too. It's like, how can you think outside the box, right? And like, to me, PBIS is like, kids want to be in that school and staff want to work in that school. If both those are truly of a strong, that's part of a strong PBIS system. You know, we're acknowledging every time that we're helping each other out and doing the right thing. So, it's kind of that that continuous bucket filler.
We're hoping to expand upon schools that are PBIS schools as well. That is a goal of ours, is to onboard more. I think part of the dilemma in doing that in the first year of us kind of taking on this piece, through the Aware Grant, is just you have to have a certain level of school readiness in order to be able to sign on and get approval through PBIS. And so, we're having to take steps to get closer to that readiness level of sites before we're gonna be able to sign on through that application process, so to speak, through PBIS. So, that's kind of our goal, is to be working towards that with our sites and trying to get more sites to the point where they're ready.
And to be able to financially help them through that process.
Yeah.
I think the only other barrier is, I mean, it's been subs this year, and so how do you get trainings when we're struggling, or sometimes staff are are. With that, I'm gonna pass it over to my teammate, Callie.
Yeah, so the next slide is on restorative practices. And so, through the Aware Grant, we've had the opportunity this year to be able to offer restorative practice training, specifically circle and restorative dialogue training to all of our support staff. And so, at this point, our social workers, our deans, our counselors, our integration specialists, our American Indian homeschool liaison, and then also a mental health practitioner that works at Myers, have had the opportunity to participate in this training. And so, kind of the the end goal, right, is to continue to offer opportunities for ongoing restorative training and through the project Aware Funds. Of course, there's other funds that come along the way, because we're always looking for those opportunities. In fact, we filled out a grant opportunity today, in fact, to try and support this work. So, as those come up, potentially come our way, the goal would be to also further continue to embed this work. We are looking at a upcoming training in August for teachers to have the opportunity to to attend if they would like over the summer. We're also looking at an admin and district leadership restorative practice training coming up in June, that is in development. And then we're looking at a restorative chat dialogue training for all staff district-wide coming up in our professional development days in August when we return from the summer. And so, Mickelson Consulting, we've been working with, and they're amazing, they've been partners that have supported Lincoln Park and strategic plan development around restorative practice work. They've also are highly recommended, and they offer a lot of training through MDE every year. They put on circle training for the Restorative Practices Conference every June, that's offered at Cape and Cloquet through MDE. We're utilizing them for our district training as well, and we're trying to be intentional with having that consistent training offered by them to our staff. So, we're looking at how can we strategically move this along at sites. We're also hoping to be able to partner with some specific schools that we know have a high level of suspension rates to try and see if we can have an even more intensive focus at those specific sites. So, we've been, in the works, kind of been planning for that as well.
Just to head up follow-up, how, I, that this is wonderful, all the training you've done, but how are we helping parents understand what restorative practices are even?
Yeah, and I think that will definitely be another part of the conversation as our strategic plan behind restorative work moves forward. I don't think we're at that point yet. I think right now, we're at a point of just educating our staff and getting them comfortable with the idea of what restorative work is, and getting some experience with it and trying it out, so that we can more collectively move that vision forward and embed it in our sites. That's kind of the end goal, right, is to become a restorative district and become restorative schools, but we know that's like a five-year process to do that. And so, we're kind of taking baby steps, starting with the training aspect. But some of those those pieces are critical, right? It's like, what is your communication to the community? What is your communication and how you educate students on this? What, even simple things of like, do we have brochures? What types of posters we have around our buildings? Like, there's so many layers to becoming a restorative school. What does our behavior response plan look like when a student has a behavior? Like, what, how does that look? All the way to how does that then filter to our district's code of conduct and how we report that within Infinite Campus? And so, there's many layers to think through and, but it's a work in progress, but I'm optimistic that it's heading in the right direction, so. And it's nice to have the money to back it. Any other questions with that, or we can move to the next slide? So, Project Aware is funding a lot of different things this year. One of those that we just recently moved forward is alternative seating funding. We offered forty thousand dollars to our secondary sites to put towards alternative seating funding in the classroom, so we're tuned to be able to have opportunities for movement and sensory outlets and things to engage students, to keep them in the classroom. That was one of the big asks for our secondaries. At the elementary level, we are looking to purchase calming kits, we are in the process of that, and working with our elementary classrooms, so every teacher would have the the option to have a calming kit in their class for students. So, we're looking through budget items on what that will be right now, with the goal of having that available and ready for the fall, along with the training component with teachers, just to know how they could utilize those calming kits within their space. Jake and I also had the opportunity through this grant to attend youth mental health first aid training and became trainers in that. And so, we're planning to move forward with that next year and start offering youth mental health first aid training for staff and community, and so that will be in the works coming next year. Second Step, we purchased positive reinforcement lanyards. These are kind of examples of what they look like, and we're gonna be offering those to all staff and teachers in the elementary level moving into next year. So, those will be handed out to me in school year during fall PD days, and that's just reinforcing the skills that they're learning about problem-solving steps and calming steps to that they can utilize in working with students. We've also purchased some posters that will be going up in some, in our schools as well related to Second Step. So, just trying to find ways to reinforce some of those skills that they're learning and continue that dialogue and conversation around Second Step. We also purchased a one-site license for IM4, because one of, IM4 is a University of Minnesota program that looks at how to deliver social, emotional, behavioral tier-two interventions for students, to support them when they have that need beyond the classroom, to get another layer of support. And so, one of the things as we're developing our multi-tiered systems of support handbook that we're finding is that there's not a lot of evidence-based interventions that exist or that you can find as a one-stop-shop place where you can have access to how do they, all the interventions work together? Like, what what ma, what interventions do we match students to, and how do you do that? And how do you track that? And all of those things that go into that. And so, IM4 is a great system for all of that, and we're hoping to utilize them to embed some of the language around evidence-based interventions in our handbook, so that when we do get time to move this handbook forward, there can be training also that can kind of coincide with that. We're looking at what does IM4 provide right now in terms of videos and training opportunities, so that we can provide those training opportunities to staff when the time comes to talk about tier-two interventions to support students. And we are thinking about that long-term already, is like, how can we go forward tier-two in a systematic way? Because there's never really been strategic steps that have been taken in the social, emotional world of things, at least, to support with tier-two interventions for students. So, what does that look like to offer another layer of support for kids that need that extra layer of support? And then, let's see, what else is out here? Oh, and then we funded my position through the Aware Grant, so I'm overseeing the systems work. We also funded an SEL interventionist position this year, who supported Stowe, Homecroft, Lester Park, and Lakewood. She had a big undertaking, and I don't envy her job right now because she had a pretty significant caseload, but the rationale behind her being at those four sites is those were sites that had no gen ed, social workers, or counselors embedded in them, so there was no option to provide that tier-two extra layer of social, emotional, behavioral intervention. And so, she was that person meant to be able to offer that level of support to those sites. The end goal would be, not necessarily through Project Aware, but through other funding streams, whether it's us or our other means, is, would be to down the road, I think, to to divvy up that load a little bit, so it's not one position pulled between four sites, because we realize that that's also a lot, and it's a huge ask. But it's been great having her, and the schools that have had her in that role have been really appreciative and have wanted it to continue, and so we're just really thankful to have that. Future professional development, we are looking to offer cognito at risk, which is a mental health and suicide prevention training in the fall to all staff. So, that's in the works as well right now, and we're working with our professional development coordinator to to work on some of those logistics with us, looking at how can we get a refresher on mental health response protocol? That is something we should be doing annually. We did not do that this year. I think that is a goal we need to be aiming for every year, just as a mandatory process that we go through. We're also looking at a multi-tiered systems of support training overview for all staff, so everyone has a working kind of understanding and definition of what is multi-tiered systems of support, and what does that look like, as well as giving people a brief snapshot of where are we headed within our social, emotional, behavioral tiers of support? So, giving them an overview of our handbook and kind of what that is going to be looking like in the long run as we continue to develop that further. And I mentioned restorative chat training, calming kits, that'll be a part of PD Day, mental health first aid. And then, a couple other unique training opportunities that we're going to be exploring that are a part of Project Aware requirements is C-bits and bounce back. And so, this would be specific training that's more in the clinical realm for our social workers and potentially some of our school-based therapists to be able to participate in, that's specific to working with trauma, so students that are experiencing trauma, but within a group and school setting. And so, it's intended for a school setting, it's evidence-based for a school setting, and so that will be something that we are, will be looking at.
That they've experienced trauma in the school, or how? No, so it's trauma, it's it's trauma-based practice?
Yes, it's trauma-based practice, correct. And then, the other piece is this other training, which I don't know a ton about yet, I'm still kind of diving into it, but it's Prepare, and it's intended for school crisis teams to really strengthen the safety and crisis management, emergency responses that that districts take. And so, my understanding is that that can be done at a district level, and then also can be done at the school site level. And so, that is something that I've already mentioned to Matt, who's in kind of in charge of our emergency response team, and talked to him about kind of next steps and how we can start moving forward with some of that work. And then, just the last slide, not a ton of different changes in regards to mental health partnerships since the last time we spoke, other than we did recently. The Center for Alcohol and Drug Treatment was started. We had had that contract in place, but they had been in hiring process for a long time. It's been really hard for them to hire somebody, but they finally got somebody hired on a very part-time basis that's been able to start at Denfeld and East, to be able to offer substance use support for students. They're also looking to expand their time next school year. They think they should have another person trained to be able to get to that point. There's a lot of training requirements to be, to become a licensed alcohol and drug counselor in the school setting, and so they're kind of going through that process to ensure that they have everything, and they're complying with their licensing. And then, the last piece is just Human Development Center. We're looking to add them to Denfeld in May. Nystrom, Nystrom and Associates and Bondalak are still both at that school site, but Nystrom's had significant wait lists this, for the past few months. And they can't hire anybody. A lot of the mental health agencies we're partnering with are really struggling right now. There's a really huge shortage of therapists in the community. And so, Denfeld, we are looking to add that partnership so they can also support. And so, they do have somebody hired, they're just onboarding them, and then they're hoping to be able to start in May, so we can hopefully get some of those students off the waitlist before summertime.
So, before we take questions, I want to thank both of you again for all of your efforts and taking on the buying share of moving this forward. So, as you recall, this is not my happenstance. So, most, at the very beginning of the year and even before, we knew we had some challenges ahead of us. One, we do, we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna, you know, increase academic performance during during remote learning, right? And when students transition back. We also knew through lots of conversations and feedback from families and what research out in the land was, we knew kids were currently come back with some significant social, emotional needs not being met well in distance learning. So, the plan was, all along, is to make sure we really were strategic and focused on providing these supports, so maybe the things they listed out are things that we developed as part of our action cards at the very beginning of last year, or last year, and implemented this year. So, I just want to make sure that everyone sees that we were really, you know, thoughtful about how we supported our students, and hopefully, all of these efforts, we will see, as we continue to implement them, we will see a lot of changes over time in how our students are supported in our schools, and how we, again, focus on creating a positive learning environment for our students. So, just wanted to make sure you you notice, we focused earlier on academics, and now we are on social, emotional needs in our students. Questions?
Does it worry us at all that a lot of our initiatives are grant-based? Or or do you see in our community, just the way we are in our society across the country, more apt to give grants to school systems in the social, emotional, learning, severe, restorative, severe? All of that is just so crucial, that I think grant opportunities are gonna are gonna be there, but it's still, it's still a constant, like, grant writing, like?
Right. I'm grateful for grants.
Yes, me too.
Because otherwise, a lot of this would not exist, because the funding is really hard to find for this type of work. But they come with limitations, and you also get boxed into things that sometimes you wouldn't want to do if if you had it your way. And I think we're experiencing that and having to navigate through some of that, even with the Project Aware Grant right now. It's it's amazing, and I'm so grateful to have it, and I wouldn't change it any other way. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand. But but it, you know, there are limitations in terms of, we have to ensure that we're doing certain things, and and so we have to be careful with those, like certain data collection things and other types of stuff. We are, like I said, mentioned earlier, we are applying for another grant that's offered through MDE, we just got done writing it today, so we're gonna be talking about that tomorrow, intended for restorative practices if if we were to rec, to receive it. I think it would be a great partnership to add in addition to what the Aware Grant can provide. They would just blend really well together, which I'm grateful for. Otherwise, I don't know that we would take on another grant right now, because it would seem to be really complicated and messy to differentiate what's where-funded versus what's another thing, but they work within the same department, so I think it would work really well, that they could blend it.
Do we have legislative things coming down the pipe for for program support?
At least I read yesterday that they were considering things, but again, has to move through all of the proper channels, and and I know that's something that the governor and others have moved for. I forget how many billions of dollars they were moving forward to support K-12, and part of that center on mental health.
And I know there are a lot of times becomes grants and things that exist that focus a lot on how can the community step in and support the schools, but that also comes at a at a cost, because there still needs to be internal people to navigate that and sort through that, right? Because you need to have confidential spaces for the kids to meet, and somebody needs to be able to get the student schedules to them, because they don't have access to Infinite Campus, and you have to ensure that they know that information, and they know what our school policies and protocol are. And you have to ensure that they know that information and they know what our school policies and protocol are and everything when they're embedded in those sites. And so there, there's value in having community people, but too many community people also can really complicate things. And we really need more internal resources first because the internal people are the ones that are sending the referrals oftentimes to our mental health providers. And without them, those referrals, a lot of times won't happen. And so that's the piece that I cannot stress enough is like, we need more internal people. We need more social workers, we need more counselors, we need more people that can proactively do tier two social emotional intervention before they reach special education. And we just don't have enough of that.
I think a good example is the other position in the aware grant that she brought up, which was the interventionist. And basically trying to give every school a base level, which was a point two, but it's better than they've ever had. That every school deserves X amount, right? And I think within four weeks, her caseload was overflowed to the point that it wasn't sustainable. And so I think that shows the need that's up there. At the same time, we have lots of needs. And so that's always the kind of competitive part of where to put the dollars.
I was just going to say that I'm very grateful for the work being done. And I agree that we really have to seek long-term funding for for education and fully fund education to to really make a difference. Because I think that we are piecing things together quite well with a patchwork of quilts or a patchwork of of grants and other options. But it's important for us to to really advocate at the state level for full funding of mental health. I've read some things recently that, you know, from from the Senate saying that last year, we we gave a lot of money for intervention and there was a lot of federal funding. So that's all done. We have to kind of reserve back to our own budgets. But I think it's important as the the House and Senate go together that we increase our advocacy and try and get these make sure that the spending bills that they've worked on include funding for mental health supports for for students because it's highly needed at this moment.
Thank you.
I I just, yeah, I just, I'm a social worker. I thank you for wearing that hat. But I I have some thoughts on what we might want to do with all the wonderful things you just presented with us to our own state legislators in the next couple of weeks here, just so they understand what you're doing. I mean, they're very sympathetic, our state legislators, but I would love them to hear what you're doing and how much money we need to do.
Happy to support with any advocacy for sure. I just wanted to share that I've gotten some really good positive feedback about second step from just my parents, my own child, a couple principals. So I really appreciate kind of the history on all of this. This is obviously just, it's an understatement to say how important it is.
Thank you.
And I want to point out, I'm saying again, that second step was paid for using S R dollars. So, you know, you know, there's always asks or questions around how how can we leverage the dollars? That's one of the things that we paid for using our S R dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I was going to give some points, but it seems like everybody's going to continue handle their own business as be, but it's keep moving there. That you need a break?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Presentation is being delivered by Principal Gloke and Director. Sorry. Lava.
I was wondering if you knew my name.
Director Lava. They're going to provide an update regarding phase two planning for ALC AEO. So welcome.
Right. Well, a lot has happened this year. We have started school three separate times. And we have survived. And we are, you know, holding classes every day at Tech Village. We're going to school over at going to the YMCA for our PE classes and we're working out the bugs. You know, and it's been a very welcome welcoming environment for us. Students, I think they feel, hey, I can, you know, come to a school that isn't really a school. You know, they can walk around and see Northwestern Mutual, they can see an engineering firm, you know, and it sets a different expectation. And so I think the maturity level of of students has, you know, just by very the very nature of the building helped with that, too. You know, every student that comes in, I want to be able to give them a tour and and share the facility that we have. And so so thank you for working through that. And, you know, there was some wisdom in getting us to Tech Village. Late in the game, wasn't a part of all those, you know, conversations, but the place is really working on for us right now. There's some things that we could work on too, but it ain't perfect, but it's it's working. I did want to share some information regarding the different hats that ALC and AEO have throughout the district. And so as of March 29th, we have seen 2,157 students come through the ALC AEO office. That's a lot of kids. We have a lot of different hats. In our seat-based program, we've had 157 students enroll with us. We do want to keep our numbers around 110 in the seat-based program. But we do have, you know, a transient population, students come and go. But that's where we want to have our numbers as around 110, 115.
Will you explain what seat-based means?
Yep. Our seat-based programming will run Monday through Thursday. And we're open all day until five o'clock. And and students can, you know, come in and have our our sit-down, seat-based, face-to-face program. That's probably the most traditional that we are in the alternative school where we're going to have, you know, students going from class to class. So that's our seat-based program.
Eight to five.
Yeah, we're open all day. We have direct instruction and also indirect instruction during that. We have another program that is, you know, equally popular, and that is our independent study. And I have them together here in the in the document, ALC Independent Study and Credit Recovery, but they are two separate programs. We have what 170 students who are just doing independent study. And so those are students who are taking two classes at a time, sludging their way through a high school curriculum and then getting their high school diploma. And, you know, every week, I know at the old at Folks, we had a little bell every time that a student graduated, ring the bell. We don't have that, we don't want to, you know, we've got to be good neighbors too now. But we have students graduating on a weekly basis through our independent study program. And the the numbers there combined with credit recovery and independent study, we have had 546 students in that program.
Just this year?
Since summer. School within a school, that's a program that we have in every single secondary site. And that's a middle school and high school in the grades six, seven, and eighth, as well as in ninth and 10th grade, the core subjects. And we have a total of 369 students involved in those programs. Summer school, seat-based program, we had 227 students. And those numbers are going to continue to decline. You know, the credit recovery, you know, the the amount of fails, kids coming back from the pandemic, it is a, it's a tsunami waiting to happen. And, you know, our, I don't know if our systems can support, you know, the credit recovery that kids are going to need. And so we have looked at exploring options for 14 and 15-year-olds. And so we're in a discussion phase with that. Thank goodness, there are some S R dollars there to offset some of those extended learning times and extended school year, you know, for credit recovery. And so we're in discussions about how we can best use those funds.
Does your teaching staff tend to stay and work the summer program or not?
Yeah, we have, we're, we have to, as an area learning center, we have to be open all year long. And so we offer the independent study and the credit recovery, that'll be at our Tech Village site. And then the seat-based program, that's, you know, for grades ninth through 12, but that's that face-to-face instruction. That's another summer program for students to receive credit.
And do you usually do that at one of our high schools?
Yes. Yeah. And so we're looking at an alternative site this year because there is construction at Denfeld. And, you know, we've been working with, you know, Lincoln Park in the past to provide summer school. But busing is is a major issue for students to have to walk up the hill. DTA, I got a message from them last week that they are willing to provide service. So anyway, that's a discussion that we have yet to be had, you know, during the half of summer.
Good question. How many for the summer school, 227 students, how many teachers was that you need to do that?
It's, you know, we have the the core subjects. And so, you know, there's probably about 12, you know, teachers or so. You know, and and a lot of the times, it's been an entry-level position for a lot of people. And they've come and they've done a really good job in summer school and are now, you know, gainfully employed throughout the district. It's, I know I was a part of the seat-based summer school program for over a dozen years and tried to credibility to that high school experience in the summer when it's 85 degrees outside. Now, the other hat that we do have is the Academic Excellence Online. And just kind of put into perspective, the average course load that students have had has doubled since the pandemic. Students want flexibility in their schedule and full disclosure, my own son, for the first time in two years, stepped forth in a traditional school just two weeks ago. Okay? He has that flexibility to do it and then Academic Excellence Online is there. And I don't see that flexibility, you know, with families wanting to go away. And so that need is there. The schools throughout the the state as well are seeing that as a need. And last year, there were 32 providers. This year, there are 64 providers.
Do you think that's effective? Have you have you seen your numbers then decrease from outside our district, from people coming into ours? I know we have a good reputation.
No, but but I do see, you know, an opportunity here. We haven't done any marketing of our programming. And I was in conversation just with Nate Smith. You know, he's looking at No Jigway Language Course. You know, I mean, that's a draw, you know? And and so there hasn't been any marketing dollars put towards AEO. And we're still, you know, doubling that course load and we're up to 857 students full-time in part-time.
I I just want to, I guess, stress that too. I I would love us to be investing in helping to market and and have some of some time spent thinking that through for the very reasons you're talking about. We have an opportunity right now to really highlight this great online program we have.
And if we wait too long, that opportunity is going to pass. The competition just doubled in a year.
Yep.
To keep it sustainable, you know, really, we'd like to get other students from other districts, you know, or currently the math department for Plugwood School District. And, you know, the the need to, you know, get teachers into, you know, you know, smaller districts, Northwood, Hayfley, you know, it's just, it's sometimes it's not a draw. If there's a last minute, I can't teach this year, what are they going to do to get somebody? And so that is, you know, an opportunity that presented itself, you know, probably half dozen times all the way up to International Falls, room and town. I've had some difficulties too with some of their staff.
You and your staff have some ideas that should be shared with appropriate people. I I would love that to happen.
Awesome. Thank you. There is, you know, an opportunity to to really partner with our community. And gone are the days where we think we can do it on our own. And, you know, recently we applied for a a grant for career tech ed expansion of rigorous coursework. And we're waiting to hear back, you know, if we are going to receive that. Win, lose, or draw, you know, it is a, it is a need for our kids. And a statistic that I heard recently was that only 25% of Minnesota's workforce needs a bachelor's degree or higher. So that means, you know, we have, we do a great job of a traditional school setting to cater to that college-bound four-year student. And we're missing the mark on, you know, 75% of the kids who are going to go into the Minnesota workforce. And if they do not have a skill or a trade or a certification, you know, it's onto a a job of making nine to 11 dollars an hour. And, you know, another data that was very alarming to me was in in 2020, out of 100 students who graduated from the public schools on an IEP, only three of them went onto a post-secondary development option. Only three. So we got them to the stage and then after that, they're not moving on. So that's a life of nine to seven dollars an hour, nine to 11 dollars an hour. Our African-American students, our students of color, only five from the public schools went on. And out of our indigenous and American Indian students, zero. And so it is a, when we look at the graduation rates, it's sobering to to look at them. And I know we can put a huge dent in the graduation rate, but it's also, you know, what is the expectation after high school? And I think that we can get kids early on to engage in a trade, something that they can see themselves in, you know? So I just, I guess I like to ask a lot of questions. And, you know, how come we're not getting a geometry credit for a student in construction? What about business and personal finance? Can we get a math credit? And so kids can start to see, you know, the the connectedness that they are in school for and how it relates to what they want to do in life. So the 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 process that we're doing is getting out into, you know, the the secondary sites. And I did a, you know, just a a schedule here. I have been to three out of the four sites to get feedback on how we're doing with our school within a school program. That's one little slice. But we have a lot of other conversations to have about, you know, what does AEO look like, sound like, and feel like in the public schools in the north map, the Arrowhead region? You know, what does our credit recovery look like? Because we don't just serve students in Duluth, we serve the area. And so a lot of conversations of, you know, how we can best meet our community's needs. Open to ideas and suggestions of how we can, you know, really have an impact. Because I think, you know, ALC in particular is going to have a heavy lift here because we have a lot of touches on students who graduated in the Duluth public schools in the area.
So I want to take this opportunity to to also thank Nate and Principal Gloke.
That's okay.
I know. Mr. G, kids call me daddy, O G phone. And Director Lava for their work in this. I want to remind the board, one of the things that we had assured the board we would do is to make sure we provided an update regarding, you know, the future for ALC AEO after the transition happened. Because we knew that there was a lot of desire to make sure that, you know, we really were detailed in our planning and make sure that we really figured out as a district, what are the needs that ALC AEO could meet with regards to our students? So I want to applaud them for starting those conversations, holding those stakeholder conversations with our community. And I know our administrators and others will be involved in ongoing conversations in in the future or the vision for ALC AEO. So I want to thank both of you for, you know, starting this conversation and ensuring that the conversation has started. And we'll continue to provide that update. General law for you.
Yeah, I I I'm sure this is on your radar. For Gloke, or Gloke, Gloke. But the construct tomorrow event, that's coming up in May with all the different trades down at the deck. And we, I know we systematically bring ten graders through it, but.
You know, one of the CTE directors reached out to me and we're, you know, working on, you know, getting the group of kids down. They'll take a van and visit that.
And they they're going to have a parent component like they have the night before, which might be helpful to some of the kids bringing their parents down.
Just your questions?
Well, I I guess, also.
No, go ahead.
So, yeah, sometimes it takes a little bit of process. But as I, you know, looking at the graduation rate data and then looking at. But as I, you know, looking at the graduation rate data and then looking at hearing about your data about, you know, an increase, it's doubled since the pandemic, the average course load. So how do you see your space? I just would be curious to at some point at least hear about needs, objective needs going forward for staffing, like counselor needs, teacher needs. How do you, how do we anticipate that space? I'm glad to hear it's working out. I'm glad to hear that there's positive things happening here. But kind of looking forward, how do you see that for maybe next year?
You know, I think, I mean, I'm just gonna selfishly say that, you know, the staff at ALC AEO, they're really good. I don't want them going anywhere. And we have a good thing going. But what I found, and I think I'm in my, I don't know how many years I've been teaching in education, twenty, over twenty years, is that your best employees don't say much, they just do more with less. And, you know, when I look down and I see twenty-one hundred enrollments and we've got one counselor, they're banging. You know, they're getting work done. You know, when I see the amount of kids who are graduating, you know, and right now we have twenty-five people on staff. And so we're always able to be creative with what we have and trying to produce more. And so if I ever come to you and say, hey, I need something, then I do. You know, for right now, you know, we had an increase in FTE because of these numbers. And, you know, I brought it forward to Jen, brought it to Anthony. And we did receive more FTE because our numbers were crazy. And we had fifty-seven in geometry. And you can't run a course with that many students at AEO. And so, you know, I've had good support in that regard of giving the FTE that we need when I ask. Because I won't ask unless we need. So, I mean, the last part here I have is on a budget. And I think something that I'd really like to advocate for is one-time dollars. The Esther Dollars could be used to take our current credit recovery, which is in PEAK, which is a program that we pay for, and get it into Canvas. Because a lot of kids will start at Denvel, they might fail a class, English nine. Then they take it in summer school, okay, because they didn't have, you know, Jill for a teacher. And then they'll take it at ALC and they've taken this class three times and they haven't gotten credit. But if they have it on Canvas, we're, you know, keeping track of the percentage of course and benchmarks that have been there. And so this would be one-time dollars that it's gonna take a lot, you know, of work to do it, but something that would pay dividends down the road. You know, and the check and connect, I know that, you know, we do not have a check and connect person at the N.C. And that would be something that we would openly like to utilize that for independent study and our credit recovery of following up on kids. You know, so those are just some thoughts of how to use those one-time dollars.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. That totally makes sense about the continuity. And that's given that you're serving so many of our students that are other high schools.
Yeah, because if a ninth grader is going for a third time through Romeo and Juliet, but Canvas can show that they actually completed that unit and maybe it was my vocabulary or my other novel, then maybe they don't have to do the whole Romeo and Juliet unit again. I get that. They'd appreciate that.
Appreciate it, Eric.
I just, you know, I think among other things that craft in our society with the pandemic is we're gonna have to have a huge shift in public education, which is going to be an accessibility issue. And I think that ALC AEO and the faculty that you have there are gonna be really important. And especially those faculty then being mentors to other teachers about how to do some of this really effective pedagogy online. Because I've seen this at Scholastica and I see it a little bit within our district. We talk about classroom and classroom teachers. All of our teachers are classroom teachers, right? Because the classroom might be this physical space or the classroom is campus or some learning management system. So I think it's really gonna be important that we focus on some of this in our strategic planning. Because data has shown that maybe some students of color are more comfortable in a different environment. Some of our marginalized students, students that aren't comfortable in these environments, give them what they need. So, you know, thank you. This is really important.
And by definition, an alternative school is different. And a lot of people will go about solving a problem through a traditional lens. And so, you know, I know that's hard to explain because I live in alternative and different ways to provide an education. You know, but ultimately, I don't see us as a foreign people side as some people, you know, might look at us at, you know, or why doesn't locally shut up? Just go back at your tech village and get your work done. But I see it as an opportunity to have solutions. And, you know, when you look at equity, you know, we've talked about zero R forever. Well, if everybody had an AEO class, that kind of takes care of your equity right there because we have access to it. And so, you know, less of, you know, less of this and more of how we work together, you know, to help every kid in the other region also.
And that's appreciated because that's the whole purpose of the Phase Two planning, is to reimagine, you know, what could be done with ALC AEO. So all those things I'm sure will be discussed and researched and thought about. Superintendent, did I say I had a chair?
I was just gonna say, I actually wanna thank Director Larva and Principal Floki for all the work that they've done, especially the staff as well for the transitions that they've had. And, you know, having spent a little time down there, people are excited about the space and kids are enjoying it. And I think making sure that we, we just were thinking about that Phase Two, being creative, being bold. And also thinking about how are we incorporating the work, things throughout the district that will be innovative and available to certain kids. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for waiting.
Rosie, did you re-track?
It's fine.
Sorry about that. Our next presentation is Vanessa Sherri Williams, who is our Early Childhood/Head Start Coordinator. She's gonna give a preschool presentation.
Hi there.
Hello.
It's grant time, so I'm here with the documents that I need to have our governing board approve.
Which one would you like for?
I'm not sure what order. I'd like to start with the state. The Duluth Public Schools Head Start Program State Head Start application. If possible. The state head start application was due April first, so it has already been submitted. Duluth. I'm not going to read this verbatim for you, but it's a state grant is a close to four hundred thousand dollar grant that funds two programs. One for families experiencing homelessness and then our home-based program. So two families in transition teachers and advocates work in homeless shelters and at Washington Center with families experiencing homelessness. They do some work with early Head Start and some work with preschool-aged children. Then we have one home-based teacher providing services for preschool-aged children in families' homes for students who, for whatever reason, are not experiencing success in the classroom. So it may be mental health needs, physical health needs, et cetera. So I just, this grant needs to be brought to the governing board as, and the school board is our governing board. So I just need to show evidence that it was brought to the school board. So this one does not require a signature. So the state head start grant. Next one is the federal head start grant, the one-pager, which will require a signature. This is year two of a five-year grant cycle, so it's called a continuation grant. I've been the Head Start Director for three years and each year I've had to write a different type of grant. So this is my first time writing a continuation grant. The funding is roughly two and a half million dollars. I just need to report on our progress on the grant goals that we identified last year. So I have included those grant goals on this document. The broad goals are high-quality inclusion, ambient trauma, collaboration between our program and Early Childhood Special Ed, walking the talk of equity and inclusion, which resulted in the development of Oshkendway and the Ojibwe preschool program. We developed our own equity team in preschool, asking families to provide guidance for how we can do better work. And within the equity team, we are doing some professional development. At least one book per year offered through the news that is looking at books that have some anti-racism influence. And the final broad goal is fostering resilience with a focus on health and wellness, which incorporated some major-based programming, collaboration with the Y, and some health and wellness initiatives for families and staff. So I am asking that this grant be approved. The next thing I would like to look at is the transportation waiver. In twenty-seventeen, Duluth Public Schools got voluntary pre-K funding, which requires transportation to be provided for four-year-olds. And since our school district already had additional funded preschool-aged children, we asked that all four-year-olds be able to ride a bus to preschool as long as the session time aligns with the elementary security. And Head Start has some specific requirements asking, mandating that kids have child restraints and bus monitors. And this transportation waiver is asking that you approve us waiving those requirements so that Head Start children can get on the bus like their voluntary pre-K counterparts and just ride the bus to school. We do have some safety guidelines for the preschool children on the bus. And we have added a couple of new ones this year, so. So kids have to be four by September first, an adult needs to be present when the child is picked up and dropped off. We have increased, we have, oh, look at the numbering that's right on this document, which I don't have my own mind yet. But it is nonetheless. We have included that children wear safety vests on the bus so that they are more visible to the bus driver this year. So they are wearing orange vests that make them much more visible to the bus drivers this year. Children sit at the front of the bus, closest to the bus driver. They have a safety presentation on the first day of school. We need to remind parents that it is a voluntary thing to ride the bus. And Head Start students do have to follow some COVID guidelines. And at this time, continues to include masking. So we ask that you waive the requirements for child restraints and bus monitors so that our four-year-olds can ride the bus along with their voluntary pre-K counterparts. So that's that document. The last document, I'm so sorry, I didn't get on the agenda until, won't we really get it today? It came today. So I, the self-assessment has been a big learning curve for me. It is typically done in March prior to the grant being submitted. It needs to be provided with the grant. In fact, the self-assessment and the community needs assessment are driving forces into what the grant looks like. The self-assessment has typically been done in March using last year's data. And that has really been very difficult for me to do. So I just need to say, we can look, we can go through the self-assessment data, but I am also changing the timeline of things happening so that this self-assessment is actually done in June of the year that the data is collected and not waiting. What gets hard in my brain is I already have this year's data in my brain and I'm trying to go back and remember what we were doing last year this time. So I need to like change the timing of this. So I will be back again in June for the second self-assessment that will be submitted next year. It just needs to be done within the year before you submit the federal grant, so. The self-assessment, we look at all of our data, we pull a team together and we ask ourselves some questions. And as you know, the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year was a very unusual school year. So I just went through some of the things that happened last year, the key insights, going in and out of all the different learning formats. Absences, enrollment was strange last year, parent engagement really was challenging last year. And then we ask ourselves questions. Are students making progress? How are we maintaining our commitment to equity, diversity, diversity and inclusion? Are families engaging with our program? And are teachers feeling supported as they navigate challenging behaviors? So then we kind of look at our progress on those things. Last year, our students, black and mixed-race students did not score as well as other students. We know the pandemic had impact, greater impact on students of color. We know that there was challenge, challenges, just increased absences, accessing online materials. There were a lot of things that got in the way of really great preschool education happening. Preschool and online learning is really very challenging. So just looking through the school readiness goals there, I'm gonna let you read those. We did have smaller class sizes, so there were fewer behavior concerns noted. So our equity team also during the course of meeting last year really encouraged us that one of the best things we could do, if there was anything we could do, would be to increase representation of people of color in our classrooms. No matter how we needed to do that, whether that was books, materials. And so this year we had a BIPOC Artist in Residence program. So we, I can report on that in June. And then parent, family, community engagement is another area where we know we have some work to do just to increase our data collection. It was, most families last year and continuing into this year are looking for crisis assistance primarily. So they are not setting education goals or they're looking for food, they're looking for shelter, they're looking for crisis things. It was hard to engage again with families because they weren't allowed in school buildings last year. The PIR is, as you know, Head Start has comprehensive services. So we have some health data that comes out of the PIR. When we look at the PIR, which is Program Information Review, it was noted that thirty-four percent of our students are obese or overweight. And we wanted to acknowledge that and know that our emphasis on health and wellness is supported by that finding in our PIR. Our staff really struggle with some of the challenging behaviors. So that continues to be just an ongoing concern for our teachers. And I'll report more about this again in June. It's very hard for me to reflect on last year when I already know it's done this year. So I'm gonna try to just stick with what I've got written here. So we make recommendations from our self-assessment. We know that the social-emotional domain is where we need to put our energy. It was the lowest scoring domain. We look at five domains on our assessment tool. We also really, we have looked at rate of growth as our measurement without having targeted scores. So we are saying we want to see twenty-five percent growth in So we are saying we want to see 25% growth in this domain or 35% growth in this domain instead of saying everybody's gonna hit 80%. We are looking at changing that so that we're doing both of those things. So just so you know, we're doing a little bit of, we're looking at some target goals within each domain. We know that we need to work with community partners to close opportunity gaps. So we are advocating and through all of our community partnerships with the Y, how to streamline scholarship applications, how to get kids into swimming lessons in the summer, how to get free tickets to the aquarium, and how to streamline memberships to places because we know that the students we work with should be having the same opportunities of kids similar ages. And so we are working hard to advocate for that. We are trying to diverse our staff, diversify our staff. So when we have openings, we are putting our job openings out to local reservations and using Facebook to put some of our job postings out into social media places where we are hoping there is a diverse pool of advocates looking. And again, we know that having access to online meetings, et cetera, works better for some people, so that we need to continue to have a menu of options for families to engage with our program. So, and again, data tracking will continue to improve in the PFC area. Our hardest area to say, we can say for sure that this difference occurred because of something that happened in our program. So we are looking at ways to improve that. We know that teacher burnout and stress is a problem, so we really feel committed to responding to the needs that our teachers are expressing. There is increased mental health issues in preschool. And we need to do our best to support our teachers in every way possible. So this is the self-assessment from last year. And again, I need to have this approved by our governing board, which is you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm smiling here because what you just did is walk you through the continuous improvement process that we try to support all of our principals, all of our site through the continuous improvement, the improvement teams. Right, so she's walked through the plan, do studying, and a process where you really clearly just mapped out how you are using data to make some decisions on how to make pragmatic improvements for our students. So thank you for sharing that because I think this is, hopefully you gleaned that. And talk about kindergarten reading, that's what we're talking about, having someone who's who's really, you know, attuned to those things, listening to families, having a process, bringing her staff along, using data to make some changes to improve outcomes. So appreciate it, thank you. Questions?
Oh, just a comment, thank your policy council parents for all the work that they have done to help assess and to provide support to each other throughout this past year and a half and hell of a lot of this and too. But yeah, make sure you send a thank you for.
Yes, Faye would have been here, but I told her it was mine the last eight hours. So, yeah.
And can you remind us again where, where you are? Are you housed here?
I am.
You as?
Yep, yep, so early childhood is over in the.
The other wing.
The west wing, yes, the west wing. Is your transition program still in the Washington side though? Which is. Yeah, it is, yeah, it is. Yeah, in fact, Senator McKeown will be touring our Families in Transition Program next week. And also Oshkendwayin and the HAPD program at Lowell, which is really a very much major-based program. So we're at three beautiful options to show Senator McKeown next week when she visits.
Thank you.
Where is our, oh, I wish we again.
Oshkendwayin is at Lowell.
Oh, it's at Lowell, okay.
I just wanna say thanks, you always have such a heart for your work in serving our youngest learners and really going through that, that continuous improvement process. And everything you do is very impressive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is by our very own CFO, Mrs. Erickson.
She's waiting outside.
She's waiting outside, she wants, she wants to make a grand entrance.
I know it was a big, big group tonight, so I was in my office working while I was waiting to have probably, hopefully the shortest portion of your meeting time.
Unless we ask questions.
Well, and.
Hopefully not.
No, and I'm happy to take questions. Unfortunately, I don't have anything, I don't have a packet or anything in writing for you related to the 2020 census and the potential for redistricting for our boundary wards for elections for our, for you, our school board members. And I just want to first give a shout out to Brett Metzingen, the new Business Services Coordinator. He's taking the lead on this and working with both the city and the county as we're trying to collect all the information. He was in contact with both the city and the county today. And we don't have, they don't have their final, final things that we need to be able to propose. But what we do know is there was really minor census changes, both in the city and our townships, our, our four townships in the city of Rice Lake. And I'll just give you a brief update that there were three districts. So when you think about the city of Duluth first, don't think about the townships. There are five districts within the city of Duluth. Three had increases in population and two had decreases in population. And the net between all of them was about 600 more people than they had in 2020. But the arrangement of where they were from district to district went up and down. So we do expect that there's gonna be some just very minor few block boundary changes from the city of Duluth, that they're gonna change their five districts. We only have four wards in our school district, so we don't take them ward by ward. We have Ward One in the east side of our district. And then they also, we tack on our four townships and the city of Rice Lake into Ward One. And then we move our way west. And interestingly, 10 years ago, wards, their Ward Five and a good portion of Ward Four were our Ward Four. And it looks like the west side actually gained population, so there might be a little bit of shifting our way backwards. St. Louis County told us that the townships in the city of Rice Lake were fairly constant as well, so they're not actually anticipating any changes on their countywide. So if Ward One or our city Ward One and our townships remain relatively equal, we may not actually see any changes in our boundaries at all if the county and the Secretary of State would accept some minor variances from our, our four wards to make sure. They want them as equal as possible, but they don't have to be exactly equal, so we may end up not having to change that at all. Our intention right now is to work with Phil Chapman from St. Louis County, Ian Johnson, the city clerk from the city of Duluth. He's going to, they're both gonna provide final information. They're gonna give us a proposed map and any of the city ward changes. And then we would then just adopt those and then attach on to Ward One. And if we have to make any adjustments to Ward One to make it equal, we'll work our way west. But right now, it just looks like there'll be some minor changes in wards, their wards two and three. So I'm open for any questions?
I, 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 I wanna find out, I'm very, very intimate with our wards and our districts. And so I, I guess I do want to know where we would have an opportunity before a final decision is made to give input, even if it's a couple streets.
Yep.
But importantly, with the townships.
Absolutely, yep. And all of the townships right now are in Ward One and we don't anticipate moving any of them from outside because there's rules about contiguousness where they land and where we put different pieces. So right now, it would just most likely be those minor changes. But we will, once we get that map, we will send that out by email so all board members would receive those well in advance of the 26th. And we can also meet individually if you have any questions we can make in connection with, so that if you have any questions, we would be using the recommendations from the city and the county to bring forward as discussion items. And then if any council, or any board members have any questions, we can do that at the school board meeting before we.
So we will have an opportunity.
Oh, absolutely, yes. We will not just, we, we are hoping we're gonna see it by Friday so that we could even send them out before the weekend. But there was just still some detail work they were using on the ward maps for the city so that we could then attach what our current boundaries are. Because if you remember, I don't know if you remember visiting Historic Central, there was the big map in between the superintendent's office there. And so that I have now up in my office. So we can see the difference of where our wards are, our four wards versus the city's five. So we need to just make sure we're in alignment with that. But right now, it could be that we make no changes at all, or it could just be a few blocks.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thanks for offering that opportunity. And if you have anything you need or want me to include in my weekly board update.
For sure, if we.
Or separate emails.
If we get it, you know, as soon as we get the information, we plan on, on sending it out. We just did not, Brett was trying all day today to hope to have some maybe visual that we could share, but we didn't want to provide any information that wasn't final. So we didn't want to put that out with just estimates out there. So we will get that out to you as soon as we, we can, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Before our next presenter, I do want to have an opportunity to introduce Mrs. Angie Frank. Want to come on up and introduce yourself? She serves as our coordinator for Duluth Adult Education. She, I just realized, I was like, I don't think you've ever had a chance to be introduced to the board, so.
Yes, hello, it's nice to be here. This is my first committee of a whole meeting. And it's been a long evening and I promise I'll just put myself on the agenda in the future and tell you all about what we're doing at Duluth Adult Ed. It's nice to meet you all and see some of you again.
Great open house, yes. Really well organized.
Yeah, thank you.
Great cookies. They had, they had the local on it, printed on the Frosty. I'm gonna figure out how to do that for other schools.
So the next presenter is myself, and actually the board. Actually, a conversation regarding our School Resource Officer. It's a review. I'm going to refer you back to the document that was shared with you. It's also been linked into Board Book, which you can also access and the community can also access, and has a variety of resources. So Kayla, you can pull those up. So.
I want to thank you for sending that in such a concise little chunk. I mean, we, we probably all had these before, but they're all in different board books or different months. And so it saved us a lot of time when we were able to spend time.
Absolutely, yeah, and I appreciate that. So I always start off with the board resolution because I always try to remind everyone, how did we get here? Because I, there's always questions about, are we engaged in this conversation? But there was a desire a couple of years ago for the board, by the board, to direct administration, to conduct a review of our School Resource Officer program as well as to engage the community in conversations regarding their experiences. And so thankfully, that work took some time, but it was accomplished over pandemic. There's a variety of resources here that has been provided to you in well in advance because I want to make sure you had enough time to, you know, review it so that you can have all the information, hopefully that you need to have a real quick conversation about next steps and, and so forth. So as a reminder, this is also just a conversation. This is just discussion today, we're not, we're not asking the board to provide any recommendation. A recommendation will not be provided to the board. No decision will be made regarding our School Resource Officers. This is just an opportunity for the board to have a conversation regarding all of the information that has been gathered over the last two years regarding our School Resource Officers. And I guess I'll turn it over to the board for a conversation.
So thank, thank you for all of that. So, you know, first, you know, the contract that we have in this document, is this the current contract that we're working off of right now?
Yes.
Okay. And when we're, when we're pursuing the contract, so this, and this was for one year. So this contract is going through June?
Yes, correct.
Okay. When we, when we're working on contracts, is that, is that a collaboration between our, our Duluth Police Department and the school district? Or, you know, who has the, you know, kind of the duty of pulling together all of the contract? And is there, you know, one of the things that might be helpful is just maybe to see one other contract from maybe five years ago. Maybe that would give us kind of a, a good glimpse, I don't know. I'm not saying we have to do that, but it might be a good glimpse of seeing what we have added to the contract to make it a stronger relationship. And maybe that would help all of us understand that we've come a long way, we've made progress even in our contract, or not?
Yes, I can gather that information from past contracts. I can only talk about for the last two years since I've been enrolled.
Okay.
I've had an opportunity to work in collaboration with the police department to discuss the concerns that have been brought up or a desire to make sure that there was a discussion to review the expectations of our School Resource Officers. For the last two years, I have participated in conversations with them. As a matter of fact, if you look at Exhibit A, Exhibit A identifies actually as a, as a byproduct of conversations related to the initial concerns that students, that students mapped out two years ago. So this was a product of that. So I worked with them to make these adjustments and these were things that they, these were able to do and that obviously we supported being implemented.
I remember that, yeah. And that's at the end of the contract, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Remember Trinka helped with some of that.
Yes, she participated in the conversation. Not only member Trinka vote, there was an advisory committee that also participated. There was our board reps who were on that, advisory committee principals and others who also served as members of that advisory team.
I, as Chair Lohpold said, really appreciate all of the handouts that you've provided ahead of time so we could put some thought into this conversation. I, I'm interested in hearing from our principals and assistant principals as well as the SRO program, just things that they have seen that have changed or they feel have, have, have addressed some of the concerns that were brought up. And so that, I'm just interested to hear, particularly from our principal perspective, but also from the, the SRO leadership, if you will, and them. I just. Yeah.
And just as you are aware, there's a one that says Administrator's Presentation. So administrators did do a presentation in 2020, so some of that perspective is there. The plan is after this discussion that I will be meeting again with the secondary principals and directors and admin to have more conversations around.
And I remember that and I, I, again, appreciated getting it again. But I, I knew their perspective, the administrators that are in charge of our buildings, safety and that, I really appreciated their importance. So I just would love to, after you have that conversation, hear what they feel has, has really continued to be or has changed to, to, to make the program even better, I guess.
Hi, I was.
You've been interrupting.
So as I was kind of combing through all this stuff again, we know that we have a disparity between students of color and white students when it comes to interactions with SRO, negative, I won't, negative, however you want to frame those interactions. But SROs don't step into the situation unless they're called into the situation, right? So how are we, so we have some, what am I trying to say? We have some part in this that when we look at some of these numbers of disparities between students of color and white students and their interactions with SROs, are we doing training, like how are we? are we doing training, like, how are we addressing that piece? Because I think what I get is some of the misconception is that it's the SRO making these decisions on their own and it's not the structure in which the SROs are functioning. Now, I'm not saying there's not bias and all these things, but how are we building a structure to maybe minimize some of the individual biases that might surface? Is that?
No, it makes perfect sense. One of the things that you're spot on, and again, you have to remember during the pandemic, so there was about a year or at least many months where school resource officers were not needed in the schools because of the pandemic. So again, a lot of those conversations on the roles of resource officers, after we knew that they were going to return, we were able to implement some of the things that were brought up as concerns, to review their expectations, ideas that came from students or the advisory team. And again, in support or with the school resource officers themselves as well. At the end of the day, you're right, school resource officers, if there's an emergency, they jump in. But if it's, if it's a typical administrators need to intervene on a situation, so if there's a fight that occurs at a school, even then, it is school administrators' responsibility to deal with the matter and then decide if the school resource officers are needed to intervene in a kind of way. Unless, again, it's a fight happening in the midst of a fight, then of course they're going to jump in to protect the students and staff and school resource officers. So the goal is always to make sure that administrators are the ones who handle discipline and administer and enforce our student code of conduct. And those are the things that we have to really dive deep into as a team to see if there's, if there are concerns there, right? So if, if we, if the data or conversations indicate that school X is maybe not utilizing school resource officers as intended, then we need to have conversations about that. But again, that's where, those conversations with our school administrators and looking into data, looking into their, you know, hearing what the students and families are saying and making some decisions on how do we go about assessing if our school resource officers are staying within the scope of what we identified here as their work or not? And if it's not, then what do we do about it? And that goes back to, do we need more training? Do we need to clarify rules and expectations, you know, annually? Or as if we see a acute need and ability to be, you know, intervene sooner than that to make sure the school resource officers are operating within the scope of the expectations? So those are all things that we as administration, you know, have the ability to do, you know, on a board basis.
And there's, if I remember correctly from Marnita's table presentation, there are, there's not standards to measure like effectiveness, right? I mean, it's kind of, like, they have a school resource officer overarching association, but we don't really think of like, are there standards and practices that are, and ways that we can measure effectiveness in data? I mean, I feel like nationwide, there's not a lot of data on a lot of this stuff. Is there? Has it been studied?
I admit, one of the things that I, as I've been involved in this for over a year and a half is looking at what I provide here, the National Association for School Resource Officers is where I go to to try to determine the best practices in school, you know, and utilization of school resource officers. And it provides a wealth of information on those kind of things. But I think there is still a lot of research needed. As a district, we don't have, at least over the last two years, we don't have a way, and I'm aware of, where there's a principal and the police department do a joint evaluation of a school resource officer, right?
We don't have that.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, got it.
What I'm aware of is the police department does its assessment of the school resource officers. But I, again, I'm getting ahead of some of the things I see as potential, things that could be done to improve school resource officers if a decision is made to maintain them.
And can I just follow up to your question?
Yeah.
I think, thinking proactively, Callie and Jake sat here and gave you all kinds of great information about addressing proactively how we, you know, get to the needs of the students and react to them and restorative justice and practices. All of the administrators are going through that training, the social workers, assistant principals, counselors, I think, just recently over the last few weeks. And then all the principals are going in June. And so that, I think that's a wonderful tool to have in our toolbox for our secondary.
And I don't know if the training in the, that you've included for the SROs employed in our districts, if they have also attended on their own restorative practice within their own Duluth Public, Duluth Police Department's training. I think I saw that these four individuals have had professional development in that area.
I was just going to follow up and I may be jumping to, to what you were saying, Mr. Anthony, about, you know, what more can we do? But I guess I'd like maybe to get a better sense from LaFontaine, who kind of oversees the program, the SRO program, on what kind of trainings. He might have a better understanding about evaluations that are happening, you know, in other places, other, you know, he might have some good suggestions as well. And more background on, more specifics on the training that they're required to attend and that too, so.
I just want to be a good resource. I want to piggyback after, off of Member Eater. We're just having this conversation, just trying to, is, and you can, so Member Eater's asking, you know, if the SRO is part of our buildings and working with our students to build relationships? And naturally, the discipline, the protocol, the handbook policies that our administrators are using in the district, in our buildings, when there is, you know, a behavior that warrants that? So we say, so I think what I'm hearing you say in a way is that that isn't the, that's data, yeah. But it's not, it's the cause and effect isn't the SRO in the building. It is our policies and it is our procedures that our administrators are carrying out because of the behavior. Or, so, I mean, I don't want to disqualify the data on disproportionate discipline, but I also don't want to attach that to an SRO necessarily in the building. I don't think the data matches in that. Is that what you're trying to kind of allude to? Not that I want to spin or not use data, just it's a cause and effect logic kind of reasoning in my mind.
We just have to have a clear, we have to have a clear idea of how we start, you know, how this process starts, who's involved, and at those different layers, how do we eliminate bias, right? So it's not just, because I think a lot of it is, a lot of the conversation is putting all of the culpability for the disparities on the SROs. And it's layered. So how do we look at it in a layered approach?
And that's the equity work, the professional development that our staff has to engage in. This, this conversation we're having tonight on this particular role in our schools is so, has so many avenues of where, where we need, you know, continuous improvement and understanding. And, and I, you know, my, the other comment I have about all of this information we've got, and I don't want to go down there because I just think, I want to look at this holistically. You know, are our SROs serving a purpose? And are they effective in that purpose? And because a lot of our, a lot of the data that I see in our handouts is, you know, then I want to get a data coach in here because, you know, data can say, how you gather data, who interprets the data? So every organization that sends us data has an agenda about what they want the data to include or to share. And it's our job to kind of look at all the different data. But then at the end of the night, you know, how do we use the data? You know, and do our own biases then come into that, that decision? And so, I mean, I really like all the information we have. But it, you know, every, every, every handout, every data collected, whether it's from our own staff here or whether it's from the NAACP's position or Marnita's table, they all have, you know, a data that they give to us. And I know that data can say what you want it to say. So we have to be conscious observers and of all of that as well.
Yes, we did. I, again, applaud the board and the team that has done this work. I think that it is extremely detailed. It's been a long process. I was looking at the first resolution that was done in July, July 21st of 2020. A long process. And then I was also thinking about our conversation about the tool for equity, or the tool for equity accountability. And I think that in the decision-making process, even though we didn't formally use and explicitly use the T-tool, I think we hit upon many, many of the components. We looked at what different groups were impacted by the decision and the nature of what that impact would be. We've looked at positive, neutral or harmful impacts to identified groups. How, and I think one that we've hit on really hard is how have representative groups from these, or how many, how have representatives of this group been collaboratively engaged in the decision? This has one of the deeper decision-making processes. It's not perfect, no, no situation is perfect. But I look at the work of Marnita's table and others that have done this work. So I think those we've hit upon, I think we're kind of down to that fourth piece. How will the decision advance to advance equity, address structural barriers and reduce or eliminate disparities? It's not, I mean, I think that they're really these next steps of what are we doing for training? What are we doing for evaluation? How are we enhancing our systems and structures so that administration is properly using school resource officers? And how are we including like, you know, bias training in all the work we do will bring us closer towards those, those areas? But I think it is, it is really powerful work that's been done. And I appreciate the conversation we're having.
I just want to thank Assistant Superintendent Bonds because you started and we, and handed you this and said, do something with it and with our resolution to guide you. And so really appreciate your very thoughtfulness approach. Appreciate the updates you gave us all along, where you needed input, asking for it. And just involving both us as board members, but also the bigger community and our administrators and other staff. So really, you did some excellent work. Who would have thought when we first met you that you'd be doing wow, this work? So the way you did, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who would have thought? I didn't mean it that way, but thank you for, I just, anyway. Who would have thought? Take this on and you worked so well. That's what I meant to say. It's getting late, let's go.
Yeah, I can compliment you too. My question is, where do we go from here? Do we continue this? Do we continue, do away with SROs? Do we, I mean, where, what's the next step? We need some whether and when. Otherwise, we just said, okay, this is great, we've done all this, but what do we do with it? And I think we need to know, where do we go?
Agreed. And so that's why I made sure, I tried my very best to balance the information that, that has been gathered over the last two years. We are at a crossroads where it's clear that there is disparity in the data. So we have an over representation of BIPOC students in the number of citations that are given, also in the number of disciplinary referrals. Again, not connected to SROs, but some of those things that lead to interactions with SROs. And so I also wanted to make sure that, that those voices are elevated and those concerns from those students and the families. And even though they may be in the minority in terms of numbers, their voices are still important. I'm also going to connect it to the data related to academic outcomes because everything is connected in terms of how our students are faring in our schools, whether it's academics or how our students are faring with regards to how they feel connected in the school, how they are received, and how discipline is administered. All those things factor into the experiences that our students have. And there's no doubt, all the research says, it's impacting the outcomes that we see. So I know it's not expanding, and you're right, where it's not all pressed on our school resource officers. At the same time, we have to really think as a district, what role do they play? If we continue with our school resource officers, what do we want to do? You know, so if we have them, then what? You know, does it increase expectations, really making sure that certain trainings are occurring? Really creating systems where we are assessing on a monthly basis the data that, you know, the data so we can decide and see if there's some already discrepancy in outcomes along the way? You know, what do we do? And then there's the other side of, well, if we decide not to continue to have our school resource officers, what does that look like? And there are options for that as well, that's out there in research land. And so, you know, not all school districts have school resource officers. Some, some individuals have, they have safety teams. They are individuals who support the schools. There are other, you know, other strategies can be employed, such as whether it's restorative justice or all kind of different things could be implemented that still potentially could keep our schools safe and make individuals feel like safety isn't being jeopardized by not having them there. So there, and there's a host of other things that I didn't mention there that are alternatives to having our school resource officers as indicated by our students and families and our stakeholders, they all provide it, or counseling, or, you know, X, Y, or Z. So they also provided all those different things. Those are the things I'm, you know, summarizing here. So my question is- What's next is?
When? I mean, when do we have to make, if we have to make a decision, when or how do we make it? If we have to hire another, sign another contract by September, we have to do something before that to go through all of this stuff? And that's fine, I think we should, based on this, but how is that going to happen? Are we going to be provided with a set of recommendations that we can then reject or monitor or change? Or what? That's, I guess that's what I'm asking you.
And I guess that's what I'm looking for. To be honest, I'm looking for some guidance because again, I could map out both scenarios from moving forward with them to not moving forward with them and what those alternatives could be. But again, it comes down to how does the, you know, what's the desire of the board related to the data that we have in front of us? Knowing that we have some serious concerns articulated by certain segments of our community. And we also have another segment of our community saying that their experiences have been pleasant and they support. So we're in a predicament where we have to make a decision on what we believe is best for, for all. So I guess I'm looking for direction on how would you like to see that? Both sides? Or is there a desire from the board to go in a particular direction? And then I'll do that. I'll superintend the next.
So in framing that conversation, looking at the resolution that we passed nearly two years ago, looking at the second to the last subpoint, it says, "Now therefore, let it also be resolved that the school board directs the district administration to assess the impacted communities' experiences of and perspective on the SRO program." And, so we've done that, we've done that, we've done everything else within this. And, but this is the part that I think-
this is the part that I think is, uh, and what, what we're asking. And seriously consider that input for possible structural changes or structural or contractual changes if further contracts are pursued. So I think if, what, what, what we need to do is, is, um, hook forward, what would these structural or contractual changes look like? And then share with the board, are, do we want to go forward with additional contracts given structural and contractual changes? Or do we, are we choosing to, to go with other options? And then they, I think it would be up to the administration and with working with the board on constructing what those, those options would be. So that's, that's really, I mean, that's, that's kind of succinctly, the board has put what we, what we need to do.
I, I like the idea of, you know, looking at possible structural and contractual changes and then kind of moving from there, you know? Kind of doing the board assessment of what that would look like and, um, and then making a decision. It's hard to make a decision if you don't know what those contractual changes could be. Structural changes might be, I have ideas and probably other board members to take and put that one in.
Sounds like it's putting more work on you. So that's why I'm here.
If we have to move back, like, when would the contract need to be signed so we can, like, move backwards from that date? June?
Well, they, they, of course, they are doing their planning as well, so normally we, we try to, um, we like to have something for, you know, the end of school year, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure they would appreciate that as well.
I, I would, I would recommend that we try to come forward with something, uh, by, by May, you know, or May board meetings. I know that's a tight timeline, but if, if there was, if, if the board were choosing to depart from our normal practice or our current practice of having SROs, uh, for us to be able to make sure that we had sufficient structures in place for the start of the school year would require, uh, at least a couple of months to, to make sure that we have that ready. So that, that's, I'm not saying that we should, we should go that route, I'm just saying that, uh, that even being ready for this fall with, if we're moving away from SROs would be challenging. So I think that that, considering what are the structural, uh, and contractual changes and, and putting that forward to see, is this something that we want to continue with? And if not, then I think moving forward.
And those structural or contractual changes come from a group within your, with, within your staff or within our community that you have had connections with throughout this whole process? Or is that struck, you know, so if there is some suggestions on contractual or structural changes in how SROs are in the, in the dual public schools, is there a, is there a collaborative group that gets, that could get together and say, you know, 'cause we, we have kind of, we have a group that wants them completely out, we want a group that wants to keep them. But is there a, a way to bring the, that, those, those voices together for a collaborative? What would it look like in, in a collaborative SRO program?
Yeah, so either I can expand the advisory committee to make sure that there's, uh, you know, stakeholders and all, um, and expand that, or create a, um, a new formed team to engage in that work. So that, again, as, um, the police department is part of that, our school administrators, our some student reps, you know, I can make sure that we have a, a good representative team that would, um, be the one that analyzes more of the data, looking at the current job description and details of the exhibit A that maps out, that involves responsibilities of our school resource officers, and make recommendations again, um, that, that I would then engage in with the police department on making those changes. So we can develop a process to do that, but it, it's.
Don't, didn't we just do that in a way this whole past year anyway?
I mean, we do have some data in Marnita's table, right? Like, we do have some of that, 'cause, yeah. And I, what I'm trying to clarify is to what end are we trying to get to? What goal, what objective by making structural and contractual changes are we trying to get to? Like, we, we can't say that we want structural and contractual changes that eliminate bias from our school resource officers like that. So like, how are, how what? How and what is what I'm struggling with right now?
Well, I was just gonna say, through some of the, some of the, um, Marnita, some of the groups that we've worked with over the years have, have suggested some things that they've seen as problematic. They've also suggested some, some tweaks that they could, that they could see happening. And so, going back to some of those conversations with our community already, could we, could we, um, you know, use their voices to, you know, so I'll, I'll just, one of the things I heard when I was attending these sessions was that maybe there were just a way where our SROs wouldn't have to be in complete uniform, um, all the time, every day? That if they were dressed more casual, that wouldn't be, that would be something. And I, I, and I, I don't know, sometimes they are in full dress, sometimes they aren't. So I don't know what the dual public, uh, dual police department's guiding quota is for that. Or, you know, even small things like not having the, the, the police car squad out in the mid-front of the school where everybody has to enter in, um, and, you know, so there were, there were community members who suggested structural changes that were smaller in scope in order to help that. That's what I remember.
Yeah, and a lot of those comments are in the Marnita's table, data, which, you know, as we all know, was a really great community effort where we had all these partners at the table. Another one that comes to mind for me is not, not giving tickets with fees, you know?
And I agree that the, that part of the stakeholder engagement has already occurred. So we already have the perspective. So it's beyond that now. Now we have this information. So if the, what, I'm trying to make sure I'm hearing correctly, or can we confirm? If the direction is move forward with looking at the contract and considering all that information, work with our police department on some things that we would like to see, different in the expectation exhibit A or the roles or responsibilities, we already have that information. I, I just wanna make sure, but I wanna make sure, when I say committee, I wanna make sure that I circle back to our, uh, principals and others so they can be a part of what that, um, what that means, right? Because it, we got the information, but at the same time, our, our leaders and others have to also, um, fully understand exactly what, uh, the data is sharing and appreciate the fact that we have polar opposites and, you know, we can work together to decide on what things would we want to, uh, have the police department consider as modifications to the job description for SROs. That's, that, that's ea-, I, I'm not gonna say easy, but everywhere work, but I, I, that can be done. I'm not envisioning a, there, there won't be another big community-wide conversation.
Feels like a smaller working group, um, uh, to look at it and, uh, you know, sit down with the police department and look at the, the current, 'cause what we're really talking about is this current contract that we have.
Correct. If that's the direction, yes. If we're saying review their current contract and move forward with having school resource officers and making modifications in their expectations, then yes. But if it's something different, I, I just wanna make sure we're clear that if that's the direction, then I will pursue the other direction or have both. But I wanna make sure that what is the desire so that I, so there's no uncertainty on the direction that we're moving.
So, and just to further clarify, so is, is, so the, the, does the board prefer that we explore those options to put into the next contract and then bring it, bring forward those options to make a decision as to whether or not we're pursuing additional contracts? Or is the board preferring, preferring that we just begin to engage in, in the process of constructing the contract? That's, I think that's part of, part of it too. Are we, are you saying that we want to be able to put forward the option of, yes, yes, with these changes or no? Or are we saying, yes, we want to look forward with, with, uh, contracts for the coming year, continue to work forward in putting, doing in place changes? That's, 'cause they're, they're similar but two slightly different.
I think we, we have two members that aren't here, which is important, and I think that one thing you could do is, is go ahead and, and look at the contract and see what changes could be made, and the board could say, well, that's fine, if that's what it is, it doesn't hold water, we need to just do away with it. That's the best we can do. Any other option has to take place. I don't think you can work, you don't have time to work on both options, getting all of that together at this point.
I mean, we wouldn't even know how to fund, like, if we were all of a sudden like, nope, we're done, we wouldn't even know how to fund, I mean, safety, safety.
So I, my feeling would be to go ahead and look at the contract and see how it can be changed and monitored and improved and present us that, that's another reason. With the understanding that, you know, we could probably say, sorry, that's not enough and we can't do it. I don't think that would be the case.
And I, I, I think that, you know, again, to me, having administrators that are, uh, responsible for the safety of their buildings be a key part of this.
Did that help clarify it?
What I heard, and I heard was. What I heard was, the first step is to dive deep into the current contract, collaborate with school administrators, and make discussion, uh, have discussions on, uh, what possible changes we would want to make, given all of the stakeholder feedback, including theirs. But again, have to make sure we don't discount the stakeholder feedback we receive.
Have they seen it?
And that's considered.
Has our, has, how will these documents been shared with our district leaders?
That's one thing, and I, I share everything with everybody. So they, they have seen it as well. So it, and, and then I, we are to come back with those, uh, potential modifications to the contract as agreed upon, or consensus with administrator, and again, in, in consideration of everything that we have got from our community. That's the step.
You know, I, I know SROs and the police department have been also attending these meetings and paying attention and, and, uh, thinking about their role as well. So I, I would think that, you know, we had, we haven't sat down with them since we've gathered all this information, right?
Correct.
So this is an opportunity too, to kind of hear from them on, you know, maybe they have some thoughts on how they wanna change the proposed contract as well. And, and ideas and, and experiences, you know? And, and as we know, they're doing some, uh, the police department, their own assessments. And so I, um, I guess I'd love to hear what that conversation, um, comes out of that conversation, our stakeholders, their stakeholders, and all this input we've gathered from the community.
I, I think I have my next steps. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that concludes this lengthy agenda, but I, I do wanna say thank you for, um, listening to all our, you know, presentations. Again, I think it's just all about timing. The graduation rates came out and it gave us an opportunity without even knowing it to share all of the things they were working on. The articles in the newspaper regarding disparities in the community regarding policing, as well as the article that was just released today regarding the number of citations that have been given in our schools and the disparity that exists there, um, was also timely with our conversation with school resource officers. So I wanna thank all of you and, and, um, we do our very best to move things forward.